So we're going to start the time that I have this 6:08 PM on this, the 8th of August, 2017. We are going to begin this budget discussion at this time. And then to follow, there'll be a formal adjustment meeting with just a couple of items on it, and then we'll add the regular accounts on the agenda after that. All right. We are can do.
Hope everybody can hear me in the sound system. What we have tonight is the 2017-2018 Fiscal Year General Budget. PowerPoint up on the smart board is for us to walk through. Be happy to answer any questions once we get done. This is more or less than 30,000 foot views for the legislative portion of the budget. Go ahead, Jennifer. So what we have first is, since we saw success with helping understand what the breakout is of the funds through pie charts, we're going to start out with them. We can refer back to them as we get further on. But the main thing is just kind of understand how the whole budget breaks out as far as revenue is concerned for the general fund with the different departments. And of course, you notice the majority of the revenue comes in through administration, EMS and fire, debt service, municipal court. Courts make up the majority of it, as well as streets with the sales tax that was voted back in by the citizens. Then we have the smaller revenue generators which really aren't, which are parks, museum, police, which is through the courts, and library, and then a community center, and then communications. Go ahead, Jennifer. Since administration revenue does make up the majority of the revenue, we wanted you all to see a breakdown of what all that encompasses. So if you look at administrative revenue, it is not solely and strictly property tax. It makes up approximately half of the income that the city operates off of, but it's not our sole operating cash. Its sales tax makes up a significant portion, and this year has helped to offset the financial burden of operations as we get from it into the presentation. Franchise tax also increased slightly. Reimbursed salaries, that's going to be with the new agreements with EDC and CDC for their employees, the city employees, the reimbursement for those two organizations for those employees. We have a little bit of miscellaneous revenues, zoning fees, building permits makes up a small portion, the top left, and then the mixed rent tax, since we are not fully wett, makes up a small portion as well. Go ahead, Jennifer. Then we get into the expenditure side of the money coming in. Here's the money going out from a pie chart perspective. Administration makes up a quarter of it. Of course, the, what you're going to see, the reimbursed salaries, EDC and CDC aren't identified in the pie chart, but they come out of the administrative portion, so they help make up that quarter. Library, EMS and fire, police, both make up a little less than a quarter of the expenditures, as well as communications, municipal court, parks, senior center, community center, to keep those facilities going, thank you Chief Barnes, as well as streets. And so we do have an increase in expenditures in streets for this next year, and a good part of that is from the sales tax as well. Go ahead, Jennifer. Notable changes for 2017 and 2018 fiscal year from administration, and this is solely administration. Administration revenues increased $227,800 due to a minor increase in property tax revenue from new property added to the tax roll, and then that's $52,605. The increase to sales tax revenue was an increase of $115,000 from this year to next year, and an increase to reimburse salaries and salaries for EDC and CDC personnel, which showed in the revenue portion of the administrative. And then in addition, on the administrative side, we're asking for one full-time clerk at City Hall, and primary duty that employee would be permits. Legal expenses are anticipated to increase to cover the loss of the Assistant City Attorney. And then the big go on this year's budget is, you know, either contract services portion of administration is MCC innovations for them to come in and digitize our permanent records, so that way we have a cloud-based version, so that way if anything happens to City Hall, we do have those records somewhere else, somewhere else where it's done at San Luis and back up. Go ahead, Jennifer. All right, notable changes on the library. We have an addition of two part-time clerks, which brings the number of staff back to where the department was three years ago. So that's to help out with the added services over the library and added presentations, which, since the community is growing, we want to be able to provide effective services throughout the year, especially during the summer when children are around the school. Is that for you?
It is.
Let's see, notable changes for public safety. So this is a combination of police, communications, municipal court, EMS and fire. An addition of one full-time dispatcher. We've been filling in with the part-time, and so we need to add in one full-time dispatcher to cover our shifts because of the difficulty in finding and retaining part-time personnel to be able to do dispatch 24/7. We replaced three bulletproof vests, which are very important. We replaced one patrol unit, which is what we've been doing for the last five, six years, I believe. You got it, Chief Barnes?
Four years.
Four years. There you go. And then EMS pharmaceutical and non-pharmaceutical supply costs increased by 32%. So that's just, it's not because we're using more durable goods necessarily. Our volume has increased slightly. It's because of the market and the demand, and how many suppliers actually are providing those durable goods. Go ahead, Jennifer. Notable changes from 2017-18 in public works, and this is the public works that's not water and sewer. This is on the general fund side. Parks and streets, parks revenue increased to show reimbursement for shared use path and parks master plan. And then street repairs increased to $281,600, and that's up $21,600 from this current year. Contract service expenses increased to $170,000 for parks master plan, shared use path, and irrigation at parks. And so those are the large, those are the notable changes for parks and streets. And then we get into effective tax rate, because that's what we're going to be talking about primarily. The effective tax rate is proposed property tax. It will give the city the same amount of money, the same amount of revenue that had in previous fiscal year. So the little graph, or not graph, that just a little help along is last year's total adjusted property taxes divided by the current total adjusted property taxes value equals the effective tax rate. And so the 2016 appraised value at what? Well, it's $216,263,987. The current, the 2017 appraised value is $206,277,293. So that's a reduction of nine, just under $10,000. So for us to be effective and provide services, we're going to propose the effective tax rate. I'll show you in a second what that's going to do. Well, more else can we talk about? What is the effective tax rate, and what is the CSO thing? The effective tax rate will vary depending on increases or decreases in appraised values for the same property since the previous fiscal year. Appraised values go up, effective tax rate goes down. Appraised values go down, effective tax rate goes up. Appraised values stay the same, so does the effective tax rate. And so we've kept the tax rate at 6.1 for the last four years, I believe. And go on, Jennifer. Talk about the rollback tax rate. This is something that's been through the legislature this year, and before we fleshed it out, but they were wanting to bring it back to 4% at one point. And the rollback tax rate affects growing and declining cities. And so we're currently at a growing city, however, we're not recommending the rollback tax rate. Rollback rate allows the city to raise the same amount for operations as in the prior year. Plus provides for an 8% cushion, and that's one of our options. And it'll be in here, but it's not something we're recommending. Go ahead, Jennifer. So if you look at your 16 tax rate across the top, the 16 tax rate was .61. The 2017 effective tax rate is .66. And remember, effective tax rate is raising the same amount of revenue to perform operations. And so the rollback tax rate is 70 cents. I remember .74 probably six years ago, and that persisted for a little while, and that's not something we want to get back to. And with increased development, with the sales tax growing, and with increased home development, we believe that this is going to be an issue for this year. We believe next year is going to be much healthier. Of course, this district is one year behind this, so when you look at your school tax rate to next year, it should reflect what we're talking about this year. But what we have up here is the current tax rate, the .61, and the second to the left column, the effective proposed tax rate, which is the .66, which is just over 5 cents higher. And annual increased cost, and then the monthly increased cost, just out of breaking down for a monthly. And then the home values are along the left column. You know, the home value, how you draw home value of $50,000 up to $350,000. It gives you what the tax rate is at each, both the tax rate, current tax rate, and then proposed tax rate for next year, and then what that increased cost should be for the city. Here's something that was borrowed from Addison a couple of years ago. It's called the cost of governance, and strictly a tool to help kind of identify and help break down how the city fares in your total tax bill. And so the first thing is, going back to the pie charts, those have been helpful. If you look at the 55% in the top column, the VA ISD makes up the .62, and that's something that was discussed back when the elementary bond was going through, that they were going to raise 10 cents for this next fiscal year. Grayson County, .47. Grayson College is .18, and then the City of Austin, that .66. And so at the total breakdown, City of Austin makes up that 22% out of all the services that you pay for, but we believe we're the best at it. So then if you, on the next page, look at the fiscal year 18 tax rate comparison with eight area cities, it has my population, and it has our area cities around us, and also their tax rates, their current tax rates. We don't have what their proposed tax rates are for next year, but we put in what the proposed tax rate is for Van Austin. Also have the property tax bill for City of Austin. The taxable home value lower on the right, it is estimated at $125,000 with the Van Austin tax rate. Talks about the annual property tax bill, and then what your monthly tax bill would be if you broke it out. And then we have something that's been a little controversial, so we changed up the terms in it, and it's strictly as far as what you pay month to month for services, what's anticipated versus what you pay for city services out of the property tax. Go ahead, Jennifer. Next slide will be general fund budget. Talking about general fund expenditures. And so the first column next to each department is the total, the percentage out of the total budget is the second column, and then the cents on the tax rate, and then on your monthly tax bill, what that would be. And then you've got your grand total back down at the bottom, and you can correlate it back to the previous slide. And then you've got an asterisk, expenditure figures are drawn from the proposed fiscal year 2018 general fund budget. Does not include any self-supported operations like water and sewer fund we discussed a couple of weeks ago. Go ahead, Jennifer. And that's the presentation. Now we can get off into questions, and where we're going, and how we'll get there.
Can I do this by department? I can still see that way, because I pretty much have gone through, starting at the beginning.
You probably won't turn your microphone on. It's off.
Okay. I don't know what that sounds like. Okay. I would propose just going that way and go through the budget, start at the beginning.
Okay.
Because I've got questions and marks that I can just...
You've got roll rates between all shows.
Yeah. My general question is just general overall, not departmental. The appraised value, the reduction of almost $10 million in appraised value, I wonder where, how that's arrived at, because anybody that I've talked to, property taxes are going up. I mean, property values are going up.
Yes, sir.
My own personal tax bill went up 10%. Tax appraised value went up 10%.
Okay.
Okay. I know at the bank, our buildings went up. So did we sell off some property, or did we, did somebody else negotiate some property values down? I mean, I don't understand.
No. From speaking with Sean Coker of the appraisal district, his assessment of the major loss was just the taxable value on the shell of the building that Caterpillar was occupying. So we didn't get the inventory tax for the office equipment rental tax.
Okay.
So that's the main thing, and that's why I'm saying that we believe it's going to be a one-time deal, because the core is working to move into their space, start providing jobs. And so where we have increased properties, homes, Stone Hollow and Courtney primarily, as well as some of the others in the community, they have not offset that total inventory tax that Caterpillar brought in. Because they were not able to move their inventory quick enough, they did not take advantage of what's called a freeport exemption as far as being able to move their goods within a certain timeframe. So they were taxed at the full value, and we saw that benefit for the last 45 years, and going from 7 to 4 down to 6, 6.1. And, but now we're at a point, since they have departed, to where we're not trying to go back to, we're not trying to go to 7, we're not trying to go to 7 to 4. We're trying to maintain and try to provide services next year, and to be able to do that, we're recommending the effective rate of 6.6.
Well, I'm hearing Caterpillar caused the $10 million valuation difference.
That's the note. And so the main thing is, with Caterpillar leaving, that it was a much larger number, but since we have increased our inventory of homes, we're not trying to be able to increase services per se. So we're going to have the struggle of the growth and the strain that's going to put on the organization. But we're not trying to enhance services to take care of that. If you keep in mind, we've got new developments being proposed, as well as waiting, is hopefully going to open before year's end. We're going to see that strain increase. We're just trying to provide current effective levels.
Okay. I didn't have an appreciation of what we were getting from Caterpillar, so if that's where the $10 million valuation difference came in, that's fine. Okay. And like I said, I'm starting off with active revenue. So even if what you've got, you've got a revenue that's still like a $50,000 increase.
Yes.
Nominal, it is there.
Yes, ma'am.
Along with some of the franchise and sales tax revenue. So we're looking at about a $200,000 increase over last year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Which for our expenses is, that's pretty significant. I mean, that's 10%.
It is. So what we're looking at is, the majority of it, going back to the previous slides, the majority of it's coming from sales tax, and then we're having a slight bump from franchise tax.
Right.
But we're trying to make up that difference, and it's a small difference, even though, you know, everybody feels it on their annual tax bill with the property taxes.
And I'm fine with that. I guess what I'm saying is, we're getting a 10% raise in our revenues. Even with all those things, we're getting 10% more in FY18 over FY17.
I'd have to go back and look. I don't believe it's a full 10%, but it's right in that ballpark here.
$277,000.
It's close.
It's close.
So I have a $3 million...
Round it off.
$3 million budget. It's, I'd say 78, but yes, ma'am.
And when I start looking at other departments' revenue, I mean, that takes up a whole department. So to me, for the size of this city, that's a nice, that's a nice amount of funds.
It is. And the issue that we're running into are, it is with staffing having to be on deck as part of providing service and not necessarily focusing on grants and on extra streams of revenue to be able to try and provide, you know, that service level that we want to provide, it's making, where we're having to make it up with the deficit. Okay? Not on the expenditure side.
Yeah. And I've got that, because my question, as we keep going through this, is going to be, where are we putting that extra revenue that we got? Plus the fact that we are expecting we're going to see, we're still going to see economic improvement through this year. So there will be extra cushion in there potentially.
I don't know about extra cushion. We could go back to the slides, that there's significant changes. And so the significant changes are the dispatcher, putting in the two extra people at the library, the document retention.
I know. So let's go through each department about that, because there are certain things where I'm like, okay, if I had another $175,000 over the year, there's certain places I'd rather put it. And overall, I'm kind of looking at administration, because that's the next thing on the expenses to go. Administration is too big. It's way too big. I mean, you've pretty much allocated the rest of the department, so we understand what we're getting with public works, with museum, with parks. Administration, I'm kind of looking at it going, what's in there? What am I getting? Because it's 25% of the...
And that's why we did the breakout, exactly, and where administration revenue comes from. Yes, ma'am.
And so I wanted to ask, you want employees. So I understand that, yes, we're picking up the reimbursed salaries, but it's supposed to be a wash. They're supposed to reimburse us at cost. So should be a wash.
Sure, as long as you...
And I would want to hear it was otherwise.
No, you're right.
Okay.
And so the main thing is just showing that in the straining, that it's money in, money out.
Exactly.
And so just showing where it is and where it comes from.
Taking it out. So when you've got five full-time employees, does that include EDC and CDC?
No, ma'am.
How many do you have in administration, taking out those people that are a wash?
In administration, we have a finance clerk, we've got an admin assistant, we've got a city clerk, and we've got a utility building clerk. And what we're proposing is a permit clerk.
So four clerks, plus one, plus you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's six people.
The utility clerk is in the water fund.
Oh, there you go. She's right. Utility clerk's in the water fund.
Okay. That got us back down.
There it is.
Five. Finance, admin, what was the other one?
Finance, admin assistant, city clerk, myself.
That one more. We're missing one more.
Admin assistant, finance clerk, utility building clerk, city clerk, I'm sorry, utility building clerk is in utilities.
Oh, their department.
Keep saying that, Jennifer's going to keep correcting as we go forward.
Yeah.
City manager, city clerk, admin assistant, finance clerk, and then we're proposing a permit clerk that makes up the fifth.
Finance, admin, city clerk. You, I'm still missing the clerk.
The proposed clerk.
Yeah, I know about the proposed clerk. Finance, admin, city clerk.
City manager, and new clerk.
That's still, oh, so the one is already in there? The proposed one is already there?
Right, yeah. The new clerk is in there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So all of those are truly admin?
Mm-hmm. Of course, as we grow and as we get more utility customers, like we talked about the water and sewer fund, we will try and get it to where it's more equitable payout versus time expended on utilities versus time spent on the general fund.
Okay.
Because it is not an equal payout, but we don't want to regard utilities at the same time.
Okay. I also see a $40,000 increase in contract services.
Yes, ma'am. That was the MCC. That's the document retention. If you'll go back.
That is 100% that group? Okay.
And your contract services is also a part of that in your package?
Yep. I went through it. I'm just cross-referencing that to it. Okay, engineering services. What is that, and why is it in admin?
Because admin, engineering services on the general fund side, go through admin. Engineering services on the water and sewer side, go through water and sewer.
You do have them split out.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Is this Lynn?
It's Madison Johnson's, our contract engineer in front.
Okay, that's who that is.
And so what you end up having is, you have items that are reimbursed through CDC and EDC, like the parks master plan, we're working with CDC to reimburse the parks master plan. You have engineering on shared use path, and you have engineering as far as sign plans and things of that nature, not necessarily water and sewer.
But you've got the outflow of those that you're talking about, where they're in here all.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How come your payroll is going up like 70-some percent? Payroll software.
Payroll software?
Yeah, you got it going from 3,100 to 5,500. That's a big increase. You expanding?
No, we talked about...
We did add the ability to, we have several new modules so that we can reconcile our bank statements electronically at the suggestion of the auditor. We had to add...
So instead of adding...
About $200 a month. Actually, no, you're over $200 a month now. Is what you're going to be talking about.
So for reconciliation, we put on assist payroll number, program, adding enhancements to bill the due versus putting on another finance person that we don't have the money for, and we don't have the space for.
No, and I'm fine. I would have wanted you to have the capability to do reconciliation automatically. I've got them, so I wouldn't blame you for wanting to get them to do. Okay. Also, our legal expenses, just like going through the roof. What's going on with the legal expenses? Have we picked in the way of looking at legal expenses now to see where we're spending, and what can we do?
That's something for council to negotiate with legal. That's not something, we just anticipate what we're going to expect.
Well, we have the buckets we talked about, and that's not a problem to discuss. So I kind of want to know, what in the world are we spending our money on? Because we're, that's a huge increase. And I think we need to understand, what buckets are we putting all of our money into? And I don't think that's anything that requires confidential discussion.
I don't think anybody's saying that. What I'm saying is, when we, when the Assistant City Attorney left, we started increasing cost for outside legal, and so we anticipated that in this next year's budget.
Yeah, and I think what I want to know is, what are we spending our money on? Because I understand your methodology went through in increasing it, but that doesn't mean I agree that we should be increasing. If anything, I'd rather say to you, we've got to put these down. Are they reasonable? I don't care that there was somebody, and they're not there, and now you're going to pull that over. I want to know, what are we spending our money on? Because maybe we need to start looking at being a lot more frugal about our legal expenses.
One thing that, I think you do need to tell us if it's true or not, but EDC, for sure, has done some, a lot of contract work with your firm. Did that contribute a lot? I mean, developing those contracts.
I wouldn't think that would mean this, but I don't think... Shouldn't they, shouldn't they? So I guess my point on the administration, Frank, is that I, I'm looking at what value, what am I really getting from all of this? And the fact that we got a 10% revenue increase, and we're consuming it all. And I just can't balance that. I'd rather see you tell me that, great, we got a 10% revenue increase. I want to see more of that money going to police, more to communications, more to the other departments. I want to see administration go down. I want to know that there's more things that we could do to cost-cut and be frugal without what we're sending.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't see a lot of value in it. I know it's necessary administration, but I want to understand that a lot more. And I, this just feels really big.
Okay. Well, as far as legal is concerned...
Bringing it down is what I'd like to see.
Well, with increased development and with negotiations with developers, that's one of the things that, I mean, that's really supposed to be Julie's forte, and of course she shines, is 380 agreements and development. And so I would like to say the majority of it's based upon increased development and that anticipation, but a lot of it is mitigating possible litigation, because we are a more litigious society. I'll pretend to be a lawyer, and I don't think anybody else on staff pretends to be a lawyer. So... a lawyer, so Julie's expertise and referring things to her on a regular basis is going to be the consistent norm for this organization because we're going to try and make sure that we're paying for it on the front end and preventing it versus being fairly freewheeling on the back end and getting caught in major litigation.
I know Julie's doing it pretty freely, and I've been away with it too, so I don't feel like there's controls on it. I guess my bigger question is, is this budget doesn't have to be decided today because honestly, I want to go back and ask you to explain this department better to me and tell me whether there's areas that we could be a little bit more efficient and move it back. So.
Well, actually, for the revenues, it does need to be decided today, as far as we will have the time for.
So we have no ability, we can discuss it, but we're basically stuck.
I would have a lot of people that have talked about it last Tuesday and today did the second meeting, discussed it, but it isn't.
I couldn't make that.
So I understand what you're saying, but what I'm getting at is, I'm here to answer your questions. I don't know what it is that you're not.
I want you to go back and I want you to be able to tell me how you can trim the 10% of this. That's what I want, and that's how I experience my work, so I'm kind of hearing that I'm actually stuck. I have to take it, I can ask you a question, but I feel like I absolutely have no ability to tell you, no, I don't want to give you $33,000 annually. Do I have the ability?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I don't have that.
I have it.
Turn me on.
Yes, ma'am.
According to our attorney, and I did check into this before because sort of like Suzanne and I had the same feeling, and council members may, now this is the work session, it is to receive and discuss the proposed budget. Council members may discuss their concerns, objections, and goals for the fiscal year. They may also make requests for additional information, and as the process for adopting the budget unfolds and the public hearings are held, council members may make motions, or request action on particular budget line items when the agenda is posted for possible action. So we can at a later date request this when we, because tonight it is listed as discussion in this section. So we can request this when it comes time for a public hearing. We can request that we have a special call, an agenda meeting, and have an action item on that agenda before the public hearing.
Okay.
And this is what I got.
Just to clarify, Frank's right, you don't want the numbers changing after the notices, but the anticipated revenue will stay the same, so if you reduce one line item, you would reallocate it and increase it somewhere else, and that keeps the numbers the same like what Frank was saying.
Exactly.
For your notices and everything, so I just wanted to be sure.
And my point is that I want to see administration thin down, and I want to see the additional revenue go to other departments, and I feel they're more important, and that's what we should be focusing on, is keeping administration as thin as possible and putting it to the places that we know the public complained about. Public works, roads, we've been talking about roads forever and day.
That's about administration. This is, I mean, we're talking about getting a permit clerk to handle permits that everybody was complaining about before, the permits and CEO, so we're talking about adding that person to address that issue, to take that issue off the table.
I don't have a problem with permit clerk. That's not some of the things I brought up. I brought up legal expenses, I brought up contract expenses. I also know that in here we've got some of the same types of costs in every one of these departments. I understand that you're allocating things to who's using them, but I don't know that you're actually reviewing your phone systems in bulk. I have no idea how that works because I'm starting to look at phone, I look at a lot of IT, and it's pretty huge. I mean, honestly, for the technology section, it's $26,000 in admin, and I'm like, for what? What are we spending $26,000 on? I have no idea what that number is, and it seems really big because you called out separately your antivirus, you called out your backup, so you start adding those, and IT got even bigger than $26,000. I want to hear functionally, what are we spending? How are we managing the common expenses across the departments? I want to know that there's things in place where you're trying to be cost-effective, and that's what I do with my clients. So I want to hear the same things from administration because administration is a necessary evil. It's not where I want to put my money if I don't have to.
Okay. So we can come back and we can cut legal.
We may not have to. Come back and tell me what's really in there. I'm not saying go, go cut it.
Okay, that's connected to legal as far as they're breaking out their invoices.
I believe I was told she hadn't done that way now, so there should be some way to give me a basic.
Okay, and we can do that.
This is how we're breaking it out, and this is how we've seen it.
Sure. So.
I would expect I'd see the council and requests go up way too high, and we need to understand how we can deal with that because I need to know, how much is that costing?
Yeah, you may remember from the previous meetings that in June, that starting in July, we were going to break the invoices into the categories you all approved, and that was done in July, and I believe that July invoices were actually mailed today to City Hall, but we can, I could send an email with the.
Give Frank a ballpark idea that this is how you're seeing it working out. Give us something to go on. My overall point, once again, this may be the end number, but I don't understand that you're actually managing it cost-effectively. So IT, too big. I'm seeing, I'm seeing things in here that go across other departments. Are you managing those as a whole, or are you managing them independently? I really want to know how much we're spending on a phone system. I'm assuming that we spend $1,000 a month because that is the phone system for the communications, for the dispatchers? I don't know. Don't understand.
We're spending a total of $24,300.
On phone system?
On our phone system, and then there's another which is easy for 11-something. I have two minor questions.
Yes, ma'am.
That probably I'm the only one that's interested in it, but I really would like to know about the clothing supplies for City Hall.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
What are they? I mean, clothing supply, I could see that in the police, fire, Department of Public, but I, clothing supplies?
Yes, ma'am. Just like you see Steve's got a shirt on, a uniform.
Yeah, but he's not in City Hall, he's in Department of Public Works.
Yes, ma'am. And so you have ladies at City Hall, they have shirts that are made in over here, and so we buy only a couple, and so over time, we'll have an inventory where you'll add some or have a week's worth that sometimes are starting.
So we're going to have shirts at City Hall?
The ladies have shirts, yes, ma'am.
When do they wear them? Right, every day?
No, they only have two or three, so they wear them, and maybe they could be.
I didn't understand that, and I didn't understand the $8,500 for City Hall's telephone. You know, I was expecting maybe the Police Department, the Fire Department, I thought, I would have guessed theirs would have been the biggest bills, but instead it's 8,500 for City Hall for just the telephone.
Are you talking about the lease of the equipment, or are you talking about the service?
Exactly.
I'm talking about the service.
Well, are you talking, the 8,500?
The lease, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is the 8,500, is it in the line item or is it in the contract services?
It's in the line item for the telephone.
That's going to be the equipment itself.
Okay, and add that then to the cost of the phone system, which is another 11,500, 600. So now we're talking $20,000 a year for a phone system. I'm like, really?
Well, you have the equipment that you have to purchase.
Just for the five people?
No, no, it's broken out.
Okay, but that's my point, Frank, I don't know what it's for.
So there's things we haven't broken out in the past, and so to not make it, so cumbersome for y'all to not understand. We can break out legal as far as he uses it, he requests what, we can do the same thing with IT, we can do with phones. I've got to request GCEC to give us that data and that information, just like we did for water sewer workshop. I can move the money around, but it's going to be, I'm not trying to do a show game or anything.
You're thinking way too tactically. I just want you to be able to explain to me these a little bit better, what they are. I want to know that you are looking at them from a much larger perspective, so I don't like seeing phone in two different places. I understand why you're doing it because it's an accounting method. I don't care, I understand the accounting method, but it doesn't help me justify spending $20,000.
I understand, that's what I'm explaining to you. One is the physical equipment, and the other.
It's an accounting, you have to account for them in two different places, I got that.
No, but it's two totally different things. You've got service, which is under contract service, and then you've got the physical equipment, which is a line item within the fund itself.
It's a phone system. It's the use and the payment for the phone system.
Okay, but I'm breaking it out, I'm articulating to you what exactly it is. It's the physical equipment.
Do we need a $20,000 phone system? Do we, well, how do we, how do, is that for five people?
No, ma'am, it's for the entire city.
So here's my question.
And I told you we worked it out.
I don't know what it's for.
Okay.
Yeah, so I understand why you're presenting it from an accounting perspective, it's not helping me understand what you're doing with the $20,000 phone system.
Yes, ma'am.
And I still would like to see you tell me that we're doing the most we can to cut down, to keep service, but find ways to keep cutting costs because to me, administration's too large.
Okay, we can certainly spread it out.
Have to spread it out.
Exactly what you're talking about, breaking out families, breaking out everything that each individual department, and it will probably be contract service. It might be in the sale in the one and a half.
I'm not asking you to break out my department, I want you to be able to come back and tell me what they're for, and tell me that you tried to review them, and for a $20,000 phone system, it covers X, Y, Z. You know, last time we renegotiated this, it was, you know, when, you know, what are we doing with these very large costs? I mean, I didn't ask about clothing, even though it was odd because I'm like, it's on small, and I know there's cushion in here, I got it. But I want to know what the big things, what in the world are they for?
If you go back to our, we don't break for your name, I wouldn't say this, there shouldn't be anywhere.
I would put cushion in.
We won't try to.
I'm done with that department.
Okay.
Library, I have a question on the library. I'm looking down here at the 69 Playa. I want to make sure that you have computers included in it. You've got books and takes, and I didn't see anything that specifically listed computers, and I know computers can really go.
Absolutely, and.
Is that included in this?
That is not. Computers are machinery included. And we have a five-year technology plan in place which allows for two new systems to be put in every year.
Okay.
We've been very fortunate.
This is two new computers.
And we've been very fortunate and able to refurbish, you know, what police has, we've bought from other departments, when they upgrade, we've had, been very fortunate to have a gentleman on staff and that's been able to refurbish them and rebuild them for us to cut that expense. We actually have a more updated fleet of computers than brand new, so we're able to make do with that. It's not.
Did you want me to say that in the speaker?
No, no, ma'am. It is not, but we've made, we've made do with what we've got, and we've done a pretty good job of it.
Well, I commend you for it. I just, I know the importance of the computers, and especially during school. So many of the students use those computers, and it's really important, and I just wanted to make sure that you could include it in this budget.
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
I'm going to step back from the bigger question because I'm not, so I'm going to ask a tougher question.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me what the library does anymore because I'm one of those people, I ebook it all the way, so I really don't understand what you're doing anymore.
Okay, a library serves a dual purpose. We enrich the community in which we exist in by providing entertainment as well as education opportunity. This is, reaches out into all aspects of the community in every demographic. We get a lot of press before our obvious programs, the big children's programs, and I probably don't think they would tell you why reading literacy and.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And, you know, we can skip over the children's part, but where we start to lose kiddos is obviously when they start reaching their seniors and going into adulthood. We keep them engaged with lifelong learning through our animated club, through our teen councils, and through our teen programming. Again, this is about keeping them reading, keeping them interested, keeping their imaginations active, keeping them in that, what you're not, what you're losing in today's times is the ability to research and do your things. We're a very self-search society, we want to touch a button and have it dumped out into our labs, so research and, oh, research, what's this on?
Yeah.
Research is, those skills are very important into leaning into adulthood. For adults, you know, we, we're, our society is very technology dependent in the sense that you have to have internet capability, you have to have A, access, and B, still use it. Our seniors do not, our intelligent folks do not. We have adult job seekers, we have adult students, we have college students that can't afford internet nor lack the skill to do so, to file your tax return, to get your employment benefits, social security, all that has to be done online, and we simply don't have the means to purchase a computer or a service to do that.
So I'm hearing the big things, number one, you're now sort of providing technology access for people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know about the children's things because you do have a lot of press, so I do know about those, and that's all preschool, pre-kindergarten, which you start losing when they go to school.
Absolutely, we have elementary programs as well. Big preschool, a little bit smaller, more elementary, and then they decrease it as you go up into high school.
I mean, as far as the numbers you give us, 79, what percentage, I mean, what are the demographics, who's coming in the door? What's the majority of them?
Well, I don't, you know, we have a door counter that does, it counts bodies, and we average 1,700 people a month, which is a lot. I would say the majority without having to do a scientific study, just having 16 years on the job watching, is, yes, the majority are families, families with children are number one, and then number two are adults, adult job seekers.
Which are probably for the technology.
Absolutely.
So those are your two big services now, technology and preschool programs.
Entertainment and enrichment, yes, ma'am, education.
And don't you have a homeschool program also?
No, ma'am, we don't. Homeschoolers use us quite a bit for the education, for the educational resources we offer, yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't find my note, how many staff are you at now?
Well, I have two part-time and myself and one full-time person, and this is, that's down two, down actually three from where we were four years ago, but just that's where we stand now, it's just myself and one other full-time person and two part-time people.
Oh, so it's two full-time?
Yes, myself and one.
And two part-time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you have double coverage then, there's two of you that live during the hours, but you're bringing it up to four part-time workers.
Actually, the two part-time positions are 11.5 hours apiece, so I'm going to combine those since it's going to be pretty hard to find two people that want to work just such a short amount, so I'm going to combine that and have one part-time person that makes an hour, which is my, what my other two part-timers are at.
Okay, three.
Yes.
Do you know what full-time equivalent is that from that? You have two full-time, two part-times plus the other two part-times, how many full-time people do you get out of part-time people?
There's just going to be the three part-time and the two part-time. It will be a net increase of one part-time person.
Three, three, thank you, perfect, almost four. And then the copy machine, do you charge for the copy machine? Because you have a lot of copy machine stuff around.
Yes, we do, and it's one of our own sources, right?
Is it on the revenue side? Okay.
Absolutely. We charge for copies and.
Oh, that's in your miscellaneous revenue?
It is.
Okay, okay, sounds like it's not for library clients. We should have.
I don't know, you never see my.
Yeah, we know. Okay, you charge them for the. Okay, you charge them for the faxing too?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that is your only source of income. Yeah, I mean truly, my only concern is that, and I know you know you're up against this, is libraries are becoming, you're getting pretty close to the museum. Yeah, and I'm looking at the museum, it's not using anybody. And you've got almost four full-time staff. So it's balancing, it's a brutal, tough question. I'm going to ask it and I'm not saying I have a response or I'm one way or the other, but I think it's trying to sit there and understand really how to weigh four full-time people.
Well, two full-time and two part-time with the addition of one other person, so it's not four.
Full-time equivalents, so we would take your part-time people and make forty, divide by forty hours. You're almost at four full-time people.
I don't understand.
Am I not saying that correctly?
Now we're paying benefits, ma'am, no ma'am.
They don't pay benefits.
I'm not talking about that. I'm not saying it correctly. Full-time equivalents means you've got a twenty-hour person here and a twenty-hour person here. They equal one full-time equivalent.
And, okay, so we would have.
Not benefits, but full-time equivalent.
We would have, if you looked at it that way, we would have three full-time and one part-time.
Four full-time equivalents.
Three full-time and one part-time. I will have three part-time people at nineteen hours apiece. I would have them two full-time. So if you combine the two part-time to make one full-time, then that just makes three full-time and leaves one part-time out.
Or three.
Yes.
So that's where I'm getting it. Your budget's about the size of, you know, some of these other, I mean like.
And I understand because.
A little over half of what our E D C, sorry, legal budget.
The primary reason why I bring all these statistics with me is because I understand that if, I have to paint a picture because you aren't in the library to see. So I try my best to paint a picture for the folks that don't come to libraries and don't use them. And I understand that, and the relevancy question is not going to hurt my feelings. We, we get it all the time.
Yeah.
Why do I go to the library if you have Google? We get that all the time. Well, I try to paint a picture that, I understand that you might not be a library user and you might not be, and you might not be, but we've got seventeen hundred people that come through our doors every month that are.
Okay.
And in rural community especially, the services that we offer are critical. That we're not going, people don't have somewhere to go. The internet is a critical service, an essential service that only we are providing.
And that's a good point. So when I hear seventeen hundred people a month, it doesn't mean anything to me. I don't know what that means.
Correct. And it's starting to make a lot of sense now if, if we have unemployed individuals coming to file their unemployed paperwork online because they don't have a computer at the house. Even if they do have a computer, they're probably going to use wifi or.
Absolutely.
Things of that nature.
Yes.
So instead of becoming, it truly becomes a resource for people, not just a literary resource.
Absolutely. It's twofold. You're going to come for entertainment.
I call it the media center, is what I call it.
You're going to come for entertainment, you know, to read, to expand your mind and escape in a book and enjoy that, but you're also coming for enlightenment and to empower yourself. Knowledge is.
Also people are coming to work, they're coming to survive.
Exactly, exactly. I could provide you with testimony from several people that have.
No, it's just the role of the library is changing from the child that needs to go look through the cycle of Britannica for their senior, for their senior paper.
And providing information is, it's a big responsibility in the sense that if you're going to provide information, it has to be relevant, current, and correct information. You know, legal information that's outdated, medical information that's outdated, dangerous information. So it's our responsibility to be able to.
Yeah, and I think my point is it's almost rebranding with the library. So we call it library, and if you tell me those seventeen hundred people, if you can start to quantify of that, we're really looking at so many people that are using your technology, then maybe what we should be discussing is putting the right budget to putting the technology. So it's balancing those expenses and what you're getting against what you're really providing as a service. So that's where I'm trying to look at it and go, listen, they're not libraries like I've noticed them. They're media centers, they provide all these other things now, but.
Quincy, Quincy, I'd love to show you. Your daughter Quincy has been fixed in our library for three years.
Yes. Okay, good, that was my big question.
Does anybody have any other questions about library?
We don't, at the museum, we don't see the budget until we get to this. But we've always paid the seven dollars for the fire inspection. But you have the staff for contract services. What do we have?
Let's go to contract services for the museum.
No, because we haven't seen anybody over there. Well, what are we getting? That's not very much money, but I would like to know what our contract service is.
So your contract services, if I can give you a breakdown. Tax on the fire equipment, fire extinguisher inspection is seven dollars.
Yes.
Forty-three is.
Actually, it should be fifty here for that because they have to replace the extinguisher.
Oh, that's right. So what they told us is the next year, instead of hyper-statically testing, come in and check the extinguisher and replace it. So that's fifty dollars this year.
So we're under budgeted for them already.
It's, and the budget is fifteen here.
It just went up five hundred eighty-five percent is what I'm seeing.
So seven dollars to check and fifty dollars to replace the extinguisher. Got you. All right, makes sense. Hey, forget the five dollars.
And there, we're getting away, seven dollars for it.
There you go.
Same old, we got fifty. That's the only question I have, I just didn't know what we were, I just wanted to make sure what we were getting.
And that museum is run all by volunteers.
Yes.
And this is just to make the facilities stay open.
And we clean up windows too.
Gives you a roof over your head. Okay.
Oh, real cars outside, cars in the.
The rail cars outside, well.
No, that, that one.
They're going to be on another budget we talked about earlier.
Okay. Who's next?
EMS.
Okay.
Tell me about building permits. How do revenues flow into, building permits flow into any grounds? Do they just get part of it or?
Prevention, laws, handling, plan review, and fire inspections. That was allocated to Veritas to try and streamline the process back three, four months ago.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And the county, I take it, is what funds then EMS? How does their funding work?
No, county doesn't, well, the county faces a portion for fire and EMS annually, but it only typically makes up about twenty to thirty percent of the overall revenue to fund.
And do we have benchmark statistics or something? Because we're obviously operating at a loss. It just ate up the $200,000 initial budget we got. Is that the norm? Is there something to know how?
Typically, fire and police command twenty-five percent of each budget. So typically, fire and police in larger communities may go fifty percent of the budget.
Of the budgets, but within there.
As far as expenditures, yeah.
Do they operate it? How much of a loss do they normally operate at? Do we know whether, I didn't do the percentage of how far we're off, but how much of what they bring in?
It's typically significant, typically at least fifty percent.
We're going to break in for just a second. We've got these brand-new microphones and we're still the museum. We're hearing from people in the back, they can't hear us once again. And our backs are turned to you.
So typically, fire and police are not self-sustaining operations. They're a service, they're not an enterprise. The fire department EMS have been operated as an enterprise in the past, and there's still remnants of it. And it does generate revenue. However, it doesn't offset the expenditures, and that's been the case for the last couple of years.
Okay, I just don't know how to compare their loss to know whether we're still being efficient with our losses, is where I'm kind of going.
Well, really what it comes down to is the revenue that we're bringing in. We do our best to offset it, but we operate a skeleton crew. There are two full-time employees on every shift, and we supplement with two part-time. So most of the fires that we're going to fight, unless we have four-man staffing, when the call comes in, is going to be a defensive fire. So we don't have first-attack capability because we're staffing EMS units because that is ninety percent, almost ninety-five percent of our call volume versus fire is five to ten percent. So where PD has to call for backup typically because we don't have rousters on the shift, fire has to call in for backup on major incidents. And it's for, it's from, those units probably resurfaced for EMS. So are we getting the most bang for our buck? Yes ma'am, we have for a number of years.
Okay, so there's an area where I'm working hard to keep up with you, Frank, but those are the numbers I kind of want to hear, is these big things to say, you know, I don't necessarily want to go through line items all the time, but I want to know, okay, you know, normally, you know, this loss is this, and we know that we're beating against other people and it's right. Or, you know, you said ninety percent of this, you back up that. It's like, if we had $200,000 more in our budget, would that be well spent moving it over here? And we could add another body and we could jump up to the next layer. I mean, these are the types of things that are running through my mind of, we've got a ten percent increase in revenue, can we put it to EMS? Will it make a difference? Would it bring us up to, you know, some other level of statistic that shows that we're being effective?
We don't have the funds to be able to bring out police and fire at the same time, and that's what we're going to do.
They have to go with this angle?
That's what you typically want to do because both of them are operating in deficit.
Okay.
Okay.
With that money, can we bring the both up?
I believe so. We went through the, we went through the whole budget of staff and there's, I mean, we, could we fund the fire chief and take that off my plate? Sure. But do we need administrator over there? No, we need boots on the ground. And so what we're trying to do is continue to supplement with that part-time during peak demand. But at the same time, we don't have the funds to be able to fund another full-time officer on day shift or night shift, and we don't have the funds to fund another firefighter EMS personnel to be able to cover calls.
If we got $200,000 more, could we do some of that?
No.
Were they given the instance to say, I have $200,000 more, we got to raise $200,000?
You have twenty-four separate coverage. You have, when you put one person on shift, that's three people. Three people, typically, you're going to eat up $200,000 and then some.
Okay, so we got $200,000, and I bet you we could find and then some.
With the current call volume, it's not where we need to spend our money. We have development coming in, we're growing this power. The function in EMS needs to be on growth, development, administration, handling things from start to finish effectively and being able to cover our call volume in public settings while providing services in parks, library, and street, if they're having affected streets, or not affected streets, but having good streets and working for a green to keep up for.
And I guess I'm still questioning, you know what? All I hear about the parks is that when we get to that, there's people on there. And all I hear is the vast that supports the parks. So I'm like, why do we have all those expenses in parks?
Okay.
Let's take the money out of there, you know. I still, just not comfortable that we can't, and you're saying, well, we've got development coming. Does that not mean we have to add more people to support that development? I'm just hearing we have to have more administration and I.
The emphasis has been on permits. The emphasis has been to have a seamless process.
Which, we got it, and it's electronic, so we don't need more people to do that.
Okay.
That's electronic.
I'm hearing your opinion, yes ma'am. So it's not necessarily electronic, there's a process and it has to follow. The electronic portion of it is notification, but it's done physically by people inside and outside of the city hall.
Okay, so a monthly statistic we really need to start hearing is how much volume of that is coming in and how many hours it's taking. I guess we have one clerk now?
Whenever you hear the administrative report from the city clerk every month, she tells you what those numbers are.
She tells me how many permits, it doesn't mean anything to me. What is the thing that matters is, it's taking me one point five clerk to process the volume we've got. It doesn't, a number that I handle so many permits doesn't mean anything to me because I don't know if she can handle a thousand a week or if she can only handle ten. I don't know what that means.
Okay.
There's no context at all for anybody. You understand it, but I don't think anybody else in this room understands it. So I'm trying to help you, help us understand what you're trying to accomplish. And I, I don't get it, and I'm standing up saying, I don't feel, it doesn't mean anything. Okay, so I'm being told on EMS, there's nothing we can do, we can't add anymore.
Yes ma'am.
I have a question. On the loan payment that we have for the $94,000, what is that all?
The loan payment, principal, and then you also have.
What was the loan on?
The fire engine, the cheese vehicle, and the ambulance.
So the EMS and the fires together, right?
Yes ma'am.
So this is now, the loan payment is on the fire truck or what else?
The cheese vehicle and the ambulance.
So what is P Man that went from $500 to $3,000?
That was a management software, are you talking regarding on the PD side?
Contract?
Yeah, that was a internal software management. If you look there, we actually removed.
The 2018 budget doesn't have the fire, it doesn't have the loan payment, it's faded off, right?
Yeah.
No, that's right, the loan payment.
Oh, look at.
$91,000 in 2017, $94,000 in 2018.
I'm sorry, I was in rich capitalism.
How long that been paid off? How many years do we owe?
Can you get you the answer?
How many years? I'm sorry, I forgot to use the microphone, but how many more years do we owe?
I can get you the answer. Okay. What's next?
Oh, I didn't hear about P Man.
P Man, are you referring to? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. P Man was a management software that we were using for internal policies and procedures and training. And we have existed, went over to Smart Force with our best practices that we're using now, which are maintained with the state and our credibility that we're going through right now with the department.
So we didn't, we didn't have this before?
We had it for one year. Yeah, we had it for one year.
Yeah, but one year was $500. And you got the same software?
No, no, it's different software. PMAM is no longer utilized because it wasn't able to perform with the state recognition software that we were utilizing to get best practices.
Okay.
I would like to propose from.
I believe so. Go ahead.
Chief, what area do you have a base group and then outside, a larger area, a larger area?
Well, of course. Hello? Can you hear me now?
This is green.
Yes, green. Hello? Okay. Okay. I'll talk real loud. Of course, we carry, cover all the city limits, US Highway 75. We also have mutual aid with Anna, Howe, and the Grayson County. So if Grayson County or Howe or Anna have a call that they need assistance on, then we will respond.
So Grayson County, you would consider that in a school district?
Well, I would say anywhere, anywhere, anywhere in the ETJ. I mean, you know, of course, we've actually gone up to Sherman and assisted them when they had the, there we go, the bus accident. Really, anywhere they need law enforcement that has a major incident that we can assist. And they do the same for us, it's a mutual aid agreement that we have in order.
So is this a signed mutual aid agreement or a global?
I believe we have signed agreements.
County agreements.
Yeah, county agreements through the O C.
To all of those values that come in the county and inside, outside.
Thank you.
And I guess the one thing to put in perspective, a different way of looking at these expenses, I mean, I kind of took your deficit. I mean, I kind of took your deficit, your annual budget, and I divided it by the population and I'm going, okay, it'll cost me about two hundred fifteen dollars a year for you. And I'm like, would I pay more? Absolutely. So to me, in some extent, that's the justification for wanting to raise the rate, but it's, it helps to be able to look at, you know, those costs in a meaningful term for everybody else is paying and go, gee, I get police for two hundred fifteen dollars a year, what a deal. So I wanted to say that that was a lot more helpful to me when I finally said, I, I see what I'm getting, I understand it, we know what police are, but to actually break down that expenditure meant a lot more to me. So I was more than happy to spend more than two hundred fifteen dollars a year for you.
Thank you. Wait a second. The grant renovated that was in two thousand and seventeen, was that a one-time deal?
Yes, that was for the, if you remember, we applied for the handheld radios and we received that grant and it was a one-time grant stream.
And the clothing supplies, do you include the vests?
No, those are uniforms. The vests are down in the equipment, which was a vestial, their, a vest runs about a thousand dollars and we have about a thousand dollars each and we have three of them, they're going to be expiring, which they're only good for five years. So the uniforms-
Equipment?
Yes, down in equipment, it's going to be-
Yeah, I got it.
Yep.
Are we having challenges, I mean, just like with your teachers, are we having challenges with being competitive and-
Uh, yes ma'am.
Paying salaries, do they need to be, I mean, are we looking at alternatives, like what, what can we offer? I mean, it's a nice town, you know, a lot of people would want to live here, but that doesn't always weigh enough when you're talking about your salary.
Well, generally in law enforcement everywhere, not just Van Austin, is very competitive. I mean, we're, we're losing officers to the county south of us municipalities, but it's a hiring issue for everyone, it's not just here. And of course, we would love to pay the officers more, but also know, you know, we also have to have infrastructure and those things that, that have to be put in place also, but, you know, it's, it's right now, it's a challenge for every department because one, you can't hardly hire, nobody wants to do this job anymore, much like, unfortunately like teachers, a lot of, they're having struggles too. So you'll see the shortages that are going around, not just here, but in ominous values. There's competing departments between Frisco and McKinney all the time and you got to remember, within fifteen miles of here, we have three of the highest paying departments in the whole state. So basically what we are is a training ground for the other communities south of us.
Which is a benefit though, because people coming out and needing training, I mean, we, we have our place-
Well, the-
But are we giving them their training to say, yeah, let's at least get the brightest of the trainers and get them in here, knowing that they're only going to stay so long?
Well, we want professionals, so it takes, and I'm not going to reduce the standards to hire, so it, it's been taken, you know, this last, after we lost a sergeant to Frisco, it's taken me about six months to hire one officer. And really, because I'm not going to reduce the standards, yeah, we get applications, but they're not, they're not the quality that we want for, for the city. So, but we're struggling just like every department, no, but, you know, it is a, it is a rougher struggle because the new millennials don't look at how great the community is, they look at what that paycheck's going to be over two weeks. And so if that paycheck's going to be more down the street, then that's where they're going to go. But we have a good group, you know, but we're not going to reduce the standards, but that's something that we'll look forward to as the community grows, develop, provide, you know, higher salaries.
I mean, it's one of those things, Steve Frank, that I didn't move here for roads, so nothing against Steve and wanting to have him fill in the potholes, but I didn't move here for roads, what, what is important to me in this fire and, and police. So I, I think it's just that priority again of saying, you know what, we're going to give up in this area because we want to keep this area at a higher standard, it's what brings people in. And our roads are not what brings people in. I've never looked at a house and like, ooh, they have nice roads. I don't want to sink in them, but I didn't move here because it was a great looking asphalt street, though, Frank. So I, I think we need to be honest and say, hey, we're just trying to keep the holes filled, you know, keep it lean.
Oh, you don't?
I have no question.
What is communication? Is it dispatch, is that what it is?
Yeah.
I don't click on the one that is.
Yeah, it's dispatch.
Okay. They're, they're the when you call nine one one or something?
Yes, yeah, they're going to be your first point of contact normally.
Actually, they're, um, thanks for the fire department and the county.
Yeah, they, uh-
It's every, EMS and all of it.
Yes, they, uh, we're kind of unique in the way that we work, our, all of our communications is also cross-trained in the municipality. So they're, they, they all serve dual duties, so whether it's taking a payment from municipal court or processing a report for a request, also they dispatch for fire and EMS, which covers seventy-five square miles, including two other cities. So.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Well, they couldn't pay money, you have, you have any-
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate to, to have the group that we have. And as the city grows and the community grows, you know, and the department will have to grow. So the amount of calls that come in, you know, everyone with cell phones now, that's really increased the volume. And you have to also think about, it's not just the people that we serve here, population-wise, there's forty thousand vehicles that go up seventy-five every day. And we roughly get between fifteen to twenty, maybe even up to thirty, depending on the day, of calls on seventy-five, the reckless drivers, which typically, I would say half of those turn out to be intoxicated drivers. So, but they, they do, they do a great job, including, just like I say, they cover seventy-five square miles of, I mean, the gunner, call, city gunner calling, Howe calling for EMS.
And you're actually bringing in the revenue through the municipal court?
The municipal court brings its own revenue in.
Isn't that from all those people who are picking up on seventy-five?
Well, that's, that's- Well, we're there for, not for the revenue, we're there for the safety.
I got you. But when you do ticket them, it's coming through the municipal court?
It goes through the municipal court.
So I'm understanding that.
But it's not a source of income?
It's not a source of income.
The municipal court?
Yes ma'am.
How many, how many employees is that?
For municipal court?
Yeah.
One.
Oh, is it a judge?
The judge is in contract services.
Okay, so that's a clerk that's on the salary?
Yes.
There's also a dispatcher?
Huh?
There's also a dispatcher?
Yeah, which is also a dispatcher. They all serve dual roles.
There's one employee, right?
We have to have one that's, they're all certified and they're all trained, but we have to have one that's designated as the court clerk for procedures.
Is that the right budget?
Forty-three.
Oh. I guess what I was looking at is a hundred and six. Am I looking at the wrong? Oh, because I've got the one that does it through, I'm looking at the last year and we're up to a hundred and six.
Last year was when we had the assistant city attorney that was assigned to-
Oh, that was the budget, okay, thank you, that's what I'm missing.
It should be forty-two, eight fifty-nine.
And what is a credit card discount since to me that should not cost us money and it looks like it's costing us money?
It, it does cost the city for the processing of the credit card.
Why are we not capturing that?
Well, by state law, it's, uh, we're not able to do that, fortunately.
We have to pay for somebody to use a credit card?
Yeah, that's, that's-
We're forced by law to pay their credit card charges.
Yeah, if you're-
Everybody else.
Right, exactly. They, they capture that, but a municipality can't do that.
Nice. I think there's something wrong there. Okay.
That's really good with Texas language.
You can't go anywhere else to get them to pay for that, okay. I'm done with that, I don't have any questions on the municipal court. Parks. How many employees is in parks because I was of the understanding that Vasa pretty much took care of our parks?
Um, Vasa takes care of it just during the ball season, they take care of their inventors, not the whole park. We mow every piece of city property in the city with one person.
He starts?
Yeah.
You're good.
I'm not saying anything. I thought I heard something.
That was you.
Okay. We mow all the right ways, we mow all the roads, that one person, he starts. One week on one end of the town, goes the next week, right back to same spot.
Do we have something, because the other thing that's really big is electricity, it's huge. Is that lights? What is that?
All lights.
I guess the only thing I've noticed, just my experience, is that tennis court up at Forestmore, those lights are on at midnight, I mean, I, is it on a timer?
It's on a timer, uh, we have to go down there and reset it every time the tire goes out or flickers. And sometimes we don't know about it for two or three weeks until Julie calls them.
Because it's, I mean, you're almost pushing two thousand dollars a month in electricity-
Yes.
For the parks themselves.
Yes.
But that's also beautiful, it's also, isn't it?
It's all parks.
Well, it's all the parks, but I mean, Forestmore I would think is the big one. I mean, is anybody using?
The high school uses them also, but they reimburse us the seven thousand dollars each year.
It just seems really high electricity and I keep trying to think of anything other than those outdoor lights, I'm like, what's using them?
That's all it is.
It's just those outdoor lights?
Just outdoor lights.
Does that not seem high?
Well, heavy one, you have to change them out every day, but-
How much is it to switch them on to LEDs?
Probably.
Good lord.
Big halogen lights are very expensive, they're very expensive to buy, they're very expensive to install with the electricity.
Just as a FYI, the rate per kilowatt hour that the city pays for electricity is generally less than your retail consumer because every few years the city does, the city does, just going to now, the city does a contract for the electric rate so that it gets set.
Which means we're using even more electricity.
Yes.
That, I can't believe they're talking. This seems huge.
On contract services, is that the engineering and the building?
Yes ma'am.
No, this is the engineering and for, let me get up to my plate, that's for the engineering for the master park plan, fifty thousand, engineering for a shared path used, one thousand, twenty thousand for the engineering for irrigation system design for all parks.
Okay, so this is, this is the engineering for all of that, right?
That is correct.
Engineering only?
Yes.
And did we not discuss a building?
That's in, oh, I mean, water issue.
That would be in water, so, okay, in this parks, we've got the engineering only, it's not funding it, just engineering.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It just means we're going to get a, honestly, just some drawings is what we're going to get?
Well, I mean, the existing irrigation system at the parks is papered out.
Yeah, I know.
It is final papered out and I appreciate it.
Shared use type, I know what that is. Okay, but the parks master plan, what is a master plan going to do?
The Parks Board made a recommendation to do a master plan of all parks and all future parks and the usages, so we're in the process of doing a master plan for it. Parks Board is the stakeholders in that plan, they're the ones that's going to be working with the engineer for that.
Will they be looking at electricity?
No.
But they will be putting lights on it.
I don't have any more questions. Oh, wait, is this yours? Six, seven, oh, three, I keep going down, plus this one, nope, never mind.
Next is senior center?
Are contract services, the folks that work out there, where, where's theirs paying?
Activities coordinator, if you go over your contract services breakdown, fire extinguisher inspection, activities coordinator.
Okay, so they're in the contract services.
Yes ma'am.
And they only get a fire extinguisher?
They get fire extinguisher inspection.
Is that all they really get for-
Fifty-seven.
Fire safety, is it, is a fire extinguisher?
They have smoke detectors.
Oh, okay. But no inspections are required on those?
Manager of security.
Okay, oh, bad. Okay.
After that is the community center?
This one I just have overall, I mean, I started to look up and we spend as a city about seventy-eight hundred dollars a year or six hundred and fifty dollars a month for janitorial services. What buildings, we're talking about this building, we're talking about city hall, we're talking about-
Library.
Libraries is pretty good, okay. Justice Street? Six fifty a month? I mean, I presume this one only gets cleaned after a certain usage?
Weekly, each of them are serviced weekly?
Yeah, well, library has regular people coming through, I mean, regularly. This one, does it actually get used regularly?
So do they still not have to pay if they have to clean it up?
Do they pay a deposit and a rental fee and, and the deposit's refunded as long as there's no substantial damage?
Oh, I thought they, there was a, they had to clean it up to a certain standard and they could give their deposit back, is that no longer a policy?
Well, it's sort of a, a good fee.
Good fee.
That's true, we don't have anyone to expect.
I don't know why we don't just flat out tell them they have to pay a cleaning fee. I mean, you do that with vacation rental and all kinds of things, it's just like, you'll put in a flat fee, it doesn't come back because it's a fee.
What was your recommendation?
I don't know, how much did they charge you to clean this place? I mean, every event-
Thirty, thirty-one twenty. Should break down.
I mean, you know better than I do, but I don't know why, I mean, to me, it's pretty standard customary charge is that every time you use a facility, there's a cleaning fee.
The majority of the use honestly is brief to the various boards and other city departments.
But that would be charging ourselves.
Correct.
No, I'm talking about when people rent it.
Sixty dollars a week.
So come up with some fee, just, I mean, we're not like trying to make money off of them, but I think-
It's not a magic fee, we got to bring it to y'all, y'all got to pay for it.
Fine, come to me with the recommendation saying that it seems reasonable, if you're going to rent this for a birthday party, there's a fifty dollar cleaning fee. And I'd be like, that's reasonable to me.
Very good. Okay.
It's late last ten.
No, we, no, I'm good. Texas streets?
Is your other electricity bill for streetlights?
Streetlights.
Okay.
I just got a new one.
I got one question about the streets.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you happy with it?
I want to get a road base on every street before I start spending money on asphalt and coal. Yes, I'm happy with the program that we've got going. That's the reason I'm going to spend the money for engineering services to reassess what we did five years ago. See if we should prioritize different streets where we apply it.
In the instance, you said asphalt. And we know that this dirt has a high, has a high, high expense, high PVR. Are you looking at going, are you happy with asphalt going back in the asphalt areas? Would you be, is there something, is there more bank for the buck? Is there, is there more to gain to do concrete in some of the intersections or in some of the areas where we have high watershed, where we're not going to get the shrink in the cracks that asphalt would tear it up with a good coal spuff coming through?
We did a calculation last year, 300 feet of concrete over there.
Yeah, probably going to concrete in under streets is also to go underground drainage.
Correct.
So once you start, you have to start the downstream side, work your way back upstream, otherwise you would be all overload of garbage.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, you can get work, but I know you're working from one place to another.
Yes, I think what we figured, 300 feet is about more than one hour, one buck per year's budget was per road. And that way we'd only get 300 feet each year.
Okay, well, we've got 25 miles of streets.
So looking at all the options, looking at everything. Now, with the drainage off, drainage not going underground, drainage staying on the side. Are you happy with the storm drainage?
I mean, we're basically starting scratch all over again.
So I, I got you.
I mean, yes, we'd like to do something different, but right now, I'm trying to just get roads where we can go up and down. We're going in and tearing them out. We're putting six inches of base in and putting the chip and seal down. That extends my line a little bit longer where I can get all the roads completed. And then with base coming back, add two inches of asphalt, get a little more time, because that two inches of asphalt will give you 10 years. And with the road base down, you're not touching plastic soil anymore. So your expansion and contraction is not near as bad.
So what's your, what's your base on that?
It's a six inches of base rock. It's a bin compacted for two weeks, and we're putting two layers of chip and seal on it. And we're getting that done about, it's about 95, 12 foot. I mean, that, that gives me ability to do quite a bit of streets, making a little better services. We'll try and do one street and 300 sections over here in one year.
Okay, cool. Go ahead.
I also want to talk in about the infrastructure underneath. I'm not wanting to go back in damage and asphalt or concrete street versus tearing up a chip and seal street with infrastructure that we need to replace over time underneath. We're getting the most bank for our buck, working with the county by building potholes and industry repairs. Weren't significantly better shape than we were about five years ago. And I know it, it may not matter as far as, you know, certain customers are concerned, as far as how they feel about the streets, but the better the streets are with the speeds that our vehicles, our public safety vehicles drive at times to respond to certain calls, the wear and tear on these vehicles and the crews, and being able to maintain a safe travel, not just inside the vehicle, but on a rougher terrain. We need to have better streets because the wear and tear on the vehicles is less, and over time, we have less repairs and less replacement time of windows to replace these vehicles, year to year. I know we're, I know we're trying to replace a police vehicle every year, but they're, you know, the officers are working out of their vehicles almost from the time they're on to the time they're off versus the fire vehicles are working call to call. But overall, we need, we need good, solid streets to be able to respond effectively to public safety vehicles.
Steve, if you're happy, I'm happy.
I mean, if you give me the note of living on the side, I'll do what I can, but I have to work what's in my budget. But I do what I can, what I've got budgeted. And I do, I make, we've made quite a bit of progress in five to four years.
Five years, now we're going on number six. No, like four.
No, I'm going on five.
You're right. You're correct, Steve.
So, I mean, I had Lynn, Lynn, years ago, doing assessment, pick out the worst roads. We started on that. We're down out of the red. That was a primary priority. We're into the yellow. We're working out of the yellow, hopefully this year into the green. That's the reason I'm going to look at assessment and come back and make sure, or we're meeting what we're actually actively doing.
So while the current budget, though, are you, you're way up, you haven't spent?
I haven't got the PO from the county yet.
Oh, okay. Okay. It's coming. Okay.
Actually, I've already did the PO for $195,000.
That'll do it?
Are we ready for contract services? They'll engineer?
Yes, ma'am. We'll get on briefly in each, each department, but if you have specific questions, go ahead.
I do. Oh, I have some specific questions. On this contract services, general fund accounts, this 911 addressing, do we pay them $6,000 every year for 911 addressing?
What does that mean, 911 addressing?
I mean, I thought we'd already done that. How does that work for a yearly?
Okay, you're talking about the COG, GIS, 911 addressing.
Yeah.
That's, that's the county COG, or not the county COG, but the COG, Texoma, and that is for the mapping. That is for us to access. It has not just 911 addressing on it, it also has parcels, it has water lines, sewer lines. We can request a certain number of maps annually. They just, that's what they turn it on, the invoice is 911 addressing.
So an actual, it is an actual thing?
It's, it's all encompassing, GIS for the city.
What is the COG, what is the COG and GIS in it?
Texoma Council of Governments is TCOG. GIS is Geospatial Information Systems, I believe.
So it's GPS for the city?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, you have two things listed here. One is mosquito fogging, and then one's pest control. What's the difference?
Pest control is for the buildings themselves, for the facilities. And then fogging is, should council choose to fog, we have the lines available to do so.
Okay, my other question is the codification. $5,000 on the codification?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we'd already gotten the codification of our ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. But y'all, the documents is, and laws.
So we just pay a standard fee each year of $5,000?
Yes, ma'am. If you want to go in and update the system.
The fee is based on the number of pages that we send them to add to our code. So there's not, not really a good way to estimate the number of ordinances that are going to be brought for you and that need to be incorporated into our code every year.
I also noticed you have employee drug testing. How many, this is random employees. So about how many a year do you do randomly are employee drug testing?
This is a new, it's a new thing for us, and we haven't started yet, but it's for us to be able to do random drug testing.
So you don't know yet any of you that are doing it?
I believe at that rate. I'd have to look. I believe it's six.
Okay.
Did you actually use $5,000 in codification last year? Was that the basis for FY17? You actually spent $5,000?
I don't know the exact number, but I think it was right around $2,000 that we spent this year, but we only did the codification one time. And I'd like to do it at least quarterly so that the code is more up to date.
But that $2,000 was for you getting every bin codified, you know, which is changes. So you, you view what happened in FY17 as pretty much a standard? Every year, you expect you'll be doing that same amount that you did this year?
At least. And like I said, we only did the code that other year one time, but I'd like to do it more regularly so that if, if I spent $2,000 this year, but I'd like to do it three times next year, there's a potential that it could be closer to $5,000.
Okay.
That way the codes that you see online are more up to date.
We also have to pay them to maintain that online database.
Because honestly, when you put FY2017 on here, this is a budget, FY2017.
It's the budget for last year.
It's not the actual.
No, actuals are here.
I'd like to know how this MCC Innovations for $40,000, what is that?
That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about, all of our documents being ditched down. And it's having backup.
I remember that. I didn't know, yeah, I remember that.
And I guess with that whole IT thing, I said again, I mean, you've got Smush, you've got computer backup, you've got Office 365, you've got antivirus. So that, that whole IT thing just seems like a big, huge bucket to me, that I really want to hear more about, what the details are.
We can give a breakdown.
That'd have to be right now.
GCUC, and that's usually about our IT currently.
Not all of those systems, or not all the departments go through the main part. I'm freestanding. So some of it comes to me because I'm a freestanding assistant.
The Water Fund and the General Fund split IT for the, for the year. So you'll see that 26-1 in the admin budget, and 26-1 is in the Water Fund budget also. And we share the cost for the entire city to make sure that GCUC is available 24/7 to provide IT support. Dispatch of police for City Hall, they help us maintain our systems and back up our systems and update our systems.
And we have monthly fees. I guess I'd want to hear the difference between the administrative folks getting 24/7 support, when that's not necessary, versus the police department maybe needing this.
And the police department doesn't have IT in their budget, so where it's in admin budget, we cover the expense there. That pest control that's in our contract services, that's for all city facilities, but it's just in admin. So we could definitely break it out to make a fair share through the departments.
You don't have to do it accounting wise, but I would certainly like to have and tell me then that this million dollar administration fee, that if you really brought it down to what you use, what does it really look like? And I still have an issue overall with 26, and actually you're telling me it's even more. I mean, we're talking $52,000 in information technology, just to be multiplied 26, one times two? I'm sorry, it just seems outrageous. And that doesn't include all the other backup and stuff in there? I want to see a big number that says for IT, this is how much we spend in total, and for that number, we get this, 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 and this. And it's for whom? Because I don't think an expression needs 24/7 by.
It's not just administration, it's for everyone.
That's my point, Frank. I want a breakdown that explains this to me, and you telling me right now all these things, I, I just like, I'm on overload. There's just too much information, and it's all over the board. Can you please come back and say, you know, here's administration, we've got these things in here, and, and if we took out $200,000 of it, it actually belongs to these other guys. That's fine. You don't have to move it in the budget, but you could say, really, $200,000 of pest and janitor or whatever goes over there. And then I want to know, as the whole city, how much are we spending on IT, and what are you getting, and who's it for? Who's there's often a lot of IT spending in here? And, and obviously, I can understand emergency folks getting it, but I can't understand public works getting it. Sorry.
When I lose this, when I lose this data system, you don't have one.
Yeah, no, he, yeah.
Okay, then good. I need to understand there too then.
I think too, part of the IT is the security aspect of things, because we got to make sure that we can keep a higher standard so that all the information that the city, you know, they, they, we have a lot of information that, that need to be, as you see, I guess around everywhere, getting broke into as far as getting hacked. So it's very important that, on the IT aspect, and I see what you're saying, how you want it broke out.
I, I work in IT, so I understand.
Yeah, so you know, yeah, so I know that we did bid the service out.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but there is a breakdown of how many computers and servers there are.
Yes.
As far as admin having that protection, it's not so much for the staff as it is everybody that's in the audience, everybody that's sitting up here that's a citizen, your information's in that system. And for us to have that protection 24/7, that's more like it.
Tell me what, I, tell me what I'm getting. What is the total cost for the city, and what's in there, and what am I getting?
It's, it's not for staff, it's for everybody sitting up here that's a citizen.
That's fine, but tell me that's what it's for, because I don't know what you're getting. Oh, and Frank, I find this thing extremely confusing, and I really think we need to remove that other average monthly cost. I don't get the point at all. It just, and even when I finally did understand what it was, it still didn't mean anything to me to compare my monthly costs to, I guess what you're telling me I'm paying for my city services.
Oh, that's fine. I hope the council will.
Just to try and get some relative cost breakdowns, and it was added, if y'all want, as a body, you happy to take it out?
It doesn't make sense to me.
It's trying to help y'all out, and y'all will be able to help articulate it.
I know what it is. It doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't mean anything. Now, if you told me I spent $215,000 a year for police, that doesn't mean anything. But if you tell me my city costs me, I guess you're trying to tell me it costs me $69, or $829 a year, or $69 a month, and I spend $420 on other things in my life, is that what I'm supposed to be doing? Is that, that's what you want me to get out of this, is that I'm spending $420 in my life, and $60 for fogging?
This is for average, you chose it.
So my coffee bill is as much as my city, my city bill, and I should go through it. Is that what I'm supposed to do?
To let it off.
Yeah. It just doesn't do it for me. Oh, and does your copy machine not do plex? Does our copy machine do plex?
Print on both sides of the paper?
Your packets print on both sides of the paper.
Does it not do link?
Not that one.
Our budget, something there.
Not all that.
PowerPoint was for you to be able to follow.
Yeah, the PowerPoint's in color, but your packets every month are two sides.
I don't have a problem with color. This whole thing is on one side. So I just want to make sure we are consistent in saying we're printing on both sides of the paper all the time, because that's a lot of paper right there.
All right, got it.
Right, how's that services for you? Oh. You had finished administrations of the... Five days in. I'm going to look back. That's for your website?
Oh, okay.
Right, domain domain, it's your website.
I have a question on home parks, if we're still on contact, going down the man on that service.
I'm all done with the answer.
Okay. Home parks, we have down the shared use pad for a hundred thousand dollars, and I do have some questions regarding this, and I will be making a request for a agenda, a special agenda before we have that public hearing on this item, but it will need to be brought back to the Council for a review of this project, as this Council has not reviewed that project. But that I will have to make before the next special call. And the others, I have no questions about, other than we're at the tax rate.
I think Council did review it before we did a submitted.
I want to re-review.
Okay, we can do that, but Council was provided, did not before we submitted it to text them?
Not this Council.
This Council.
Not some of us.
Majority of us.
All right, we're in line, buddy.
The next is the tax rate, is that on my line?
Well, sir, yeah, I mean, if you want to go through that, because we've asked for a review of some things, so we'll have to discuss this all again, right? But the questions we have outstanding, do we still go through?
Well, just like the water and sewer budget, you know, the questions can be answered that you requested, and we did that with water and sewer budget. We can do it as well with this, but there needs to be a discussion, number three, regarding closed tax rate, the hearing dates of record vote, and what that's back to now.
Is that part of this?
Number three, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have no questions regarding the tax rate.
I do have a question though regarding a procedure, and I'm not sure when to ask it. But each month we get a copy of the revenue and expenditures, when do we, this is a monthly thing that we get, and it lets us know how we're doing along with our budget? When do we go over that?
When do you go over your financials?
Yes.
If you have a question, you want to roll it to send it to me or...
Well, I wanted to know, we're hearing our council meetings each month, that we can ask questions regarding that, because it's always in our council.
We can start putting it on the agenda if you want to.
I'd like to, just in case we have questions, we might not have any, but I think it is something that could be beneficial if we put it on the agenda, and that way, if we do have any questions, we can ask them at that time.
Okay.
Maybe during the city manager's report, we can talk about what the technical is for the...
Do we need a specific item, ma'am?
It would have to be a specific line item.
To review the financials?
Yes.
Why would that not be part of the city manager's report?
Because he's making a report, and we're going to have questions that we would like to have explained on the revenue and expenditure, so it would be a line item thing if we had any questions, then we can ask them at that time.
So the protocol does not allow us to ask questions of a report?
Do you want to discuss it?
No. So if you put that on the agenda, make that a regular agenda item, I would appreciate it very much.
So now what are we supposed to be discussing as far as the rate? Because if I have an issue with the expenditure, does that not reflect the rate? Because we're talking about raising our rate on the rate.
The rate itself, yes, ma'am, the effective rate is how long do the six ones, six six?
And I, I guess I just don't understand why we have to raise our rate. I'm still not clear on why we're doing that. We're growing, our revenue should be growing, why do we need to raise our rate?
Apparently we're absorbing the loss of, what's it called?
This whole rate hinges on having the lost caterpillar.
We can refer back to the time charts, but where we've increased our revenue is in franchise fees and sales tax. Property tax is a portion of that.
Yeah, but the revenues still were more than they were last year, so I understand about losing caterpillar, but the revenue's still more this year, so I don't understand how that's impacting us.
It's the same amount of money in property tax.
So then why are we raising the rate? If it's the same revenue we had last year, less rate?
Because the adjuster has lower to value of property, the rate has to go up to make the same amount of money.
Oh, to get to the same thing. Okay, that's what I was looking for.
And that's, that's why...
Tax rates.
I got it.
The tax rates.
That was the C song. Okay, got it.
But there's more to this. It's really kind of cool, because they're not taking the rollback, which is what the state affords us.
Right.
To charge the community. Right, we could do that legally with no problem, but that would really hack off a bunch of people.
Yep.
So you go with the custom rate to move up and down. Now, in the Texas Legislature, right now, they're trying to set that rate at a set, I think?
They're trying to reduce it from eight to four percent.
But it's a, but it's a standard rate period across the board, and it locks it in whether the, whether the taxes go up or down.
And that's, that's one option that they consider?
Yeah, so this is on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got it. If I hold it close down, then...
Are we, are we done with discussion now? Shall we go ahead?
No, wait a second. We're saying we're keeping the same revenue. If we're looking here at the budget proposal, we're going up two hundred thousand dollars.
Say it in the mic, say it. I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. We're saying we're keeping the tax revenue the same, yet we're raising it. You're saying we're plugging the tax rate, moving it up so that we have the same revenue from last year. But right here, the show, we've got two hundred thousand dollars more in revenue, which would mean if we're still, if we're targeting two point two and we're actually showing two point four, we're not, we're not, we're not doing the same revenue. We're increasing revenue about ten percent, which means we can lower the tax rate to bring it down to two point two.
Right, then we're not getting the Clark, we're not getting the car, the stuff that we're adding, the people that we're adding, go away.
Yeah, but that was my, that was my thing. It's one thing to talk to me about the rate, the other thing is I still said that I do not believe administration can't cut some. I believe we could get that two hundred thousand dollar back, and I want to know that we can try and go back and get that two hundred thousand dollars back. So I don't have a problem with the rate, I have a problem that we can't find two hundred thousand dollars in our budget.
It's, it's not, the property tax rate is a fraction of the revenue that you're talking about. The substantial amount of revenue that's being brought in is in sales tax, maybe ten thousand in franchise tax. Property tax does not, it doesn't amount to two hundred thousand dollars.
Frank, all I know is I've seen you've got a ten percent increase in revenue. I understand where you're telling me it's in sales tax. We could still cut our costs down two hundred thousand dollars, and we could still consider lowering that rate.
You can keep the rate at the current rate. If you do not achieve the effective tax rate for property tax, what the assessor determines is that you don't need that amount of money moving forward. And in the growth phase that we're in, if we tell the assessor that, that the effective tax rate will be lower if you're moving forward, and then you don't have the monies to be able to match the challenges that we're going to have in growth.
I didn't say lower, it's not quite six six, it could be point six five.
Okay, if you want to keep the current tax rate, then we can pull out this...
And I'm still feeling very forced to make a decision tonight when I still am saying that I think we could find savings in the expenditures. And what, and I'm not understanding why I'm being forced to vote on something tonight. You're, you're voting to have the public hearings... The rate, a proposed rate. Which is related to a proposed budget. And you have to have public hearings in order to have the proposed rate. If you don't have the public hearings, then you're locking yourself in to the lower rate. If you call for the public hearings, you have the option of the point six six, but at the end of the day, at the meeting, when it comes time to vote on the budget and vote on the tax rate, and you have the two public hearings where you heard from the citizens, you could make it lower than the point six six that was advertised for the hearings.
You need to just the motion.
You couldn't make it higher, but you could make it less. So having the public hearings gives the option, but it's not locking you in to adopting that rate. Okay. Does that help? Yes, I think so. My question is, I don't like the expenditures. I don't even have as much of a problem with the revenues, I have a problem with the expenditures and not driving out and making as many as we can be, putting it in the right place.
Okay, so this, this, this is number three. All right, so this is number three, discussion regarding a proposed property tax rate. That's what we're doing right now?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, so what we are doing now is, we're discussing it, and we need to set public hearing dates and take a record vote that we're going to set the public hearing dates and publish this.
Okay.
What we could ask for is further breakdown so that going into the public hearing dates, we have that information going into it.
Okay. And I actually, I misspoke, and I apologize. The sixty-six is the effective rate. You are not required to have public hearings to adopt the effective rate or something lower than that. If you wanted to exceed the effective rate or exceed the rollback rate, you would be required to have the two public hearings. You could still have them even though they're not required, but it, six six is the effective rate. And so the law says as long as you're staying with the effective rate, which is the same amount of revenue from property tax, the public hearings are not mandated at all.
So we would not need public hearings?
So how are we doing right? I would entertain a motion, and the motion should say, or the ruling should say, I made a motion to propose a tax rate of zero point six six three one nine eight per one hundred dollars of value for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash twenty eighteen, tax year twenty seventeen.
Is that not written?
It's on the staff report, it's on the wall.
It's on the staff, you're looking at it right there, man. No, right there.
Here.
Yes, sir. Is that still your budget? Yes.
Okay, and in the motion, it's saying propose a tax rate of one?
Zero point six six three one nine eight per one hundred dollars of value. Yeah, I agree.
Before you have a motion? If I might say something, to the average taxpayer, is this one? Hello? To the taxpayers here within the city, okay, their property values on average have gone up ten percent. We're fixing them to go up on the tax rate almost ten percent. How are we going to tell them we're justified in doing this? By continuing to provide services to the citizens, because if we don't meet the effective tax rate and the assessor gives us a lower effective tax rate in the future, it will impact public safety first and other general fund departments second. So for us to be able to handle that increased call volume in the near future, we need to have the effective tax rate. Now, you might believe that there's fluff in admin, we will break all of that out and articulate that to you. However, the effective tax rate is what is being recommended, because we're going to need those funds. When we do have enough of them to put on those additional officers and fire police, we need to be able to do that. And if we're not meeting that effective tax rate this year and next year, it will be a greater challenge.
So I heard that if we don't do it, the appraiser, the appraisal district is going to impact us?
The appraiser appraises the property, the assessor assesses the value, yes.
So if we don't keep our rate up there, they're going to come back and lower the appraisers' values, which I can't believe they do that. I wish they would. We'd all keep lowering them so that we make them devalue our property. It's coming down to you saying that we're going to get hurt because the other powers that we are going to say, you're not matching it and we're not going to value your property at two sixteen or two oh six.
Why it continues to escalate?
We've had point six one for the last four to five years. We're trying to keep it stable, we're trying to remain competitive. However, if we don't meet the effective tax rate and we continue to have this significant growth, we are not going to be assessed. Now, your property probably assessed at ten percent just like mine and everybody else, but as far as us meeting the tax rate to provide services for the city, they will not use the same formula. They will decrease the formula because we are effectively telling them, we do not need the property tax revenue to effectively provide service. Believe it or not, that's the way it works. Legislature also is trying to affect this as far as the rollback rate is concerned. Vote your conscience. I'm trying to give you a recommendation that helps us not just this year, because I know it's difficult to raise taxes, I know it's difficult to raise utilities. I know you hear it, I know I hear it. What I'm trying to do is continue to make the future for the community, and we've been able to do that for years at point six one. This year is one of those tough years where we're not going at it on the utility rate, we're going at it on the property tax rate. That's why we did the breakdown on the home values and what the increase is going to do, and that's why we also did the cost of governance as far as where your total tax bill goes, because when they come in, people not only come to you, they come to us, and they want to know why in the world am I paying this, why are you charging so much for school taxes? I'm sorry, but that's a separate entity, and these are people who come from our state typically, typically, to where they believe it's a township, it's integrated and all this other stuff. We articulate them what the value is in this city, and that's what we're doing, and it's lean, you know? If we're going to find fluff, we're going to add more officers, we're going to add more fire, we're going to add more people to the library and the streets and parks and, you know, we want everything to be first class, but at the same time, we've got to provide a reasonable rate and reasonable services, and that's what it comes down to. Well, that's, that's also what I'm trying to do is justify to the average citizen why we're raising their taxes, why their tax bill's going up, but yet we're not seeing kind of units of additions added into this budget. Right, but you're hitting their pocket to do that. Because, because the tax rate is a fraction of the revenue that we generate on the general fund side. So even though it's five cents, and you see the five cents, and you do the whole breakdown, which really pins in the whole scope of it, but when this city becomes twenty, thirty, two hundred thousand, the decisions that y'all make today on the property tax rate are going to... the decisions that you'll make today on the property tax rate are going to trickle forward. I don't want to trickle down, but they're going to follow us into the future. So could we keep it at .61? We can. The whole thing about it is, what do you want this place to look like in the future?
I would feel more comfortable going from a .61 to a .62 instead of a .66.
If that's what council chooses to do, sir, then we'll cut it back and we'll bring you something else.
I would really like to see the breakdown of that reduction up there.
Okay, I can ask the assessor.
And I don't, we can't have first class. I'm not asking for first class. And maybe we need to sit there and say something, say, well, we're not going to be for first class. And we might not hire more library people. I'm okay with that, because I don't want to ask them to pay more money because the system has got us locked in, and if one hits increase, they all have to increase. And I'm sorry, it hurt too bad getting my tax bill, and I just can't imagine asking for more.
But people do expect first-class services when they want a police officer.
I do not agree. I do not, that might be with that. But I'm not saying we have to have first-class administration. I'm not saying we have to have library. I'm not saying that some of the other things we have to have. Maybe that's the tough decision we have to make. But I think it needs to be reviewed. And I just am having a very tough time with saying we're going to ask people for more money.
Well, the choice is, the tough decision of cutting back on services, or not providing first-class services, or asking for this.
Exactly. And I'm okay with us, and for us to find a way to cut back.
I still, I contend that people want first-class services when they need the library, when they need permitting, when they want a police officer, when they need EMS. I think it's okay, everyone wants to say, well, okay, maybe I don't need all that. But when the time comes that you do need it, you want first-class services, and you don't settle for less. We're getting a lot of complaints in addition to that, because we're not providing services really first class when it comes to permitting.
I don't agree with that, I'm sorry. Not what I hear right now.
Okay, so whatever rate council comes up with, we'll make modifications. The recommendation to staff is .66.
Okay, I've got a couple questions. On, first off, this would just be a procedure question. On the agenda, even though to vote on the effective rate, we don't have to have a hearing because we posted, set public hearing dates as the agenda, do we have to do that because we posted it that way? Even though it's not required, do we have to even though we posted it that way?
No.
Okay.
But can we set a public hearing date to take a record vote at a future time? Can that be done?
Just move aside. If you're charging. Yes, as long as the. Yes, as long as the timing for the notices works. And I'll give you an example of staff being lean with legal. I have not been involved in the scheduling or notice process at all this year. In years past, I have. So as I sit here, I don't have the knowledge of their plan and what they've been doing to necessarily answer the question, but do you have to do it today? I wouldn't think so, but I don't know what the domino effect is on the timing of the notices and other things that are required to happen in order to do the budget and the tax rate by the end of September. I think the appraisal districts usually want it a little bit earlier, but. I mean, maybe we should consider having a public meeting, even though we don't have to see what they want. Either we keep it, we raise the rate, and they're going to pay more and keep the same level of services, or people don't know, like, what? We're going to have to cut back somehow.
My second question. When we're running the effective rate to maintain services and maintain the budget for last year, that's why cities do this. So I'm trying to regurgitate what I learned out in Austin at the newly-elected officials' training. So cities raise the property taxes, property taxes to increase the effective rate, to maintain their budget in a lost year like we do with Caterpillar.
That's right.
Is that correct? Okay. So in the event that we have somebody else come in, maybe not Caterpillar because Forbes says they're not doing very good this year or next year, or year after that. If we get somebody in like a Caterpillar that increases our sales tax to an extent that our funds are overflowing, the effective rate wouldn't be raised, we would just be flushed with money.
Effective rate would go down.
So the effective rate would go down. Okay, so we can bring the effective rate down, which would lower the property taxes in the event that we brought another business or industry into town that brought that money. So it's not a set in stone kind of thing. It does go down if we bring business into town.
You just do not want to give that indication to the assessor, the tax clerk.
Correct.
Because you don't need that money.
Because the tax assessor, yeah, he hits us as citizens for, you owe us a lot of money because your house is worth a whole lot more than his. But when it comes to the city, it's not worth anything. Because, is that correct?
As far as what the valuation is.
Right. Is that why they're so low?
The reason they're so low is because we didn't give the inventory tax.
Okay.
We were Caterpillar.
Okay.
How does this calendar work now? I mean, there's all this stuff, published notice, public hearing, so on and so forth, but we're deciding right now what we want to tell people we're going to do. There's no, even if you listen to them, there's no vehicle in here to say, oh, well, we're not going to go with that.
It doesn't happen. Because it's the effective rate, we don't have to vote for it.
So all these dates on here about public meetings and stuff don't apply on this calendar?
That's on the budget, not the taxes.
Public hearings on the tax rate don't apply.
If we don't raise the proposed tax rate?
If you keep it at the effective rate, we're lower.
We're lower.
We don't, anything on the calendar that is just talking about a public hearing on the tax rate, we don't have to do anymore.
But what I had said earlier was if we set a public hearing date to take a record vote at a future time on this.
The proposed budget as it stands will be on the website this Friday, but as you all see fit to change, it will change what we present to the public. I would really appreciate still having a meeting on August 29th. So if we wanted to set.
A public hearing?
This for that date, for August 29th, that would be fine.
But on the 29th, we already had it set for a public hearing. So this could be a public hearing to take a record vote at that time on the 2017 property tax rate?
It will be a public meeting. It doesn't have to be a public hearing, but it'll be an action item for council to propose a rate.
It will be an action item. So we would not have to do it tonight if that was our motion? Is that correct?
It could wait.
It can wait.
One thing we can do, and I don't know if this appeals to anyone or not, if we do anything above 61, 66, .663198, then we will be having two public hearings. And so if we had a motion to propose a tax rate of .663199, that would exceed this, and we would have two public hearings.
Can we do public hearings, no matter what the, I guess, take me back to, when is the date you have to have this rate voted upon? Can't we work backwards from that? I'd rather have a public hearing to discuss the budget and the rate, get a temperature reading from the public about this, and then we can vote. Is that not possible?
If there's a potential that we would adopt a rate greater than the effective rate, I would need to have a publication to the newspaper by Monday, the 21st, so we need to meet before that to decide on a rate.
Can we not do it with it being less than that one?
The public hearing would not be for anything above the effective rate.
So if you all want to have a public hearing on the tax rate, you're not required to if you are going to adopt the effective rate or lower. So there's no timeframe that you have to have it.
I want to have a public meeting on the tax rate, even if it's lower on point.
You want to have a public hearing? Or this is a public meeting, but if you want to have a public hearing.
I want to allow the public to voice their opinions on the budget and effective tax rate and then vote on it.
As long as you're not going to propose a tax rate that is greater than the effective tax rate, you can pick the meeting date because you're not required to have it, therefore there's not a required time.
It can be just a meeting. So we could set a date for a council meeting, call council meeting, and at that time, we could afford public input on the tax rate and take a record vote on that rate.
And propose a tax rate.
But the proposed tax rate, regardless of what it is, effective rate lower or higher, does have to be put on the city's website in a notice of the proposed tax rate put in the paper, even if you're not having it required by law, public hearings. The last day to provide that notice of the proposed tax rate under the tax code is September 1st. So whatever you have to back up to what the newspaper's deadline is.
So we're talking about August the 21st.
And that totally changes all of the dates on this calendar.
You already have that on this calendar.
If we could have the meeting, like I said earlier, before the 21st, we can still follow these meeting dates. If we change it and wait till September 1st, all of these proposed meeting dates change, and we may have additional special call meetings because of the time.
August 21st, did you say?
We need to have it before that date.
But we have time to have it before that date. To schedule it for, what's the 21st? Is that on?
It's a Monday.
On a Monday. So could it be scheduled on August the 21st, or would it have to be on the Friday before?
It needs to be before because I have to have the publication.
So what is the Friday before?
The 18th.
The 18th. So if we schedule for this call city council meeting on August the 18th for public input and to take a record vote on the 2017 property tax rate, would that clear us for everything?
You mean mandate it 21st?
No.
We have the meeting on the 18th.
She said it has to be before, so we would have to have it on Friday, August the 18th, at 6:00. 6:30.
That seems like, I mean, we get public input at that meeting, and then we wait for the start of them there.
Can I make a motion then, that we have a call city council meeting on Friday, August 18th, at 6:30 for public input and to discuss the 2017 property tax rate and set a vote on that at that time? That's my motion.
I'll second. We can't, and we won't adjourn this meeting, this particular meeting, set it at that date.
That's her motion for item number three.
That's my motion for item number three.
Discussion?
Well, is there a second?
Well, there is.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
I take that back. Well, set public hearing, that's what you're doing, you're setting a public hearing. That is an action item, setting a public hearing.
Yeah, there's a scrimmage on the 17th. There's a scrimmage on the.
Well, could we have it at 6 o'clock to not let it fall out?
That's up to y'all. That's up to how many people talk about the tax rate, but y'all need to have the tax rate.
Could I change that to 6 o'clock?
You can change it to 5 o'clock. The main thing is.
Could everybody make it, this is on a Friday? Friday? Could you make it at 5:00?
You can make it at 5:00. What the issue is, you need to have a tax rate for them to come and speak about.
But she said I could make this motion.
You can make the motion.
You're setting a public hearing.
Setting a public hearing for Friday, August 18th. Let's say.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is everybody else in work at 5:00?
No.
At 5:30. At 5:30. And we have a second.
On the, okay, and the discussion is on.
And the proposed rate is the effective rate.
Yes.
Proposed effective rate.
No, what you're proposing is the effective rate. That's the discussion.
So council is proposing the effective rate currently?
Yes.
Because they came lower?
Yes.
So that's part of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I have to make the terminology?
I have a bit of.
Somebody has to make a motion.
All right, so we have a voting on this motion first.
No, this, you have to have a rate. You have to have a rate to publish for this, for the hearing. So the effective rate is the published, is the published rate.
Funny, I'll just read this, and you can still move if anyone cares. I make a motion to propose a tax rate of 0.663198 per $100 of value for fiscal year 2017-2018, comma, tax year 2017. Does anyone so move? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
We have a second, all in favor. Well, before I do that, I need to ask one more time for discussion. Is there any more discussion? Do we all have discussing?
Yes, all done.
All right, then. All in favor. All right, it is unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, and now, now we need to talk about the meeting.
You just set the public hearing.
You have to repeat that sentence.
Okay. I propose that we have a public hearing and a call city council meeting on Friday, August the 18th, Friday, August the 18th, at 5:30, to hear, get public input, and take a record vote regarding our property tax rate.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a second, any more discussion on this?
Does that mean, actually, the way she wrote that, is that discussed? Because I'm just reading what she had on here before, public hearing on proposed budget and proposed tax rate? Is that the same thing as what she said?
Well, we won't cancel input.
I mean, public input.
That's what we're getting. I just want to make sure whether we had to say budget and effective tax rate.
Yes.
Oh, well, the budget we then took, because I didn't say budget.
Did you? Yes.
Okay, budget.
Budget and effective tax rate. Just like you have on the little clue thing. Okay.
Put that in there.
Yep, got it.
Any more discussion? Any questions?
You better not.
All in favor? All right, it is unanimous, and so we have a meeting on August 18th at 5:30 p.m. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? Okay, we're done with that one. Commonly known as 250 North Dallas Avenue and 278 North Dallas Avenue, in parentheses, currently zone Commercial District-1. For variances to the Van Alsteyen Code of Ordinances, Section 46-37D, in parentheses, area setback height and coverage regulations to allow the buildings to remain as they are and to eliminate the screening wall requirement between commercial and residential properties. And as you can probably tell by the language, we have a residential and a commercial property that are side by side, and the owner would like to eliminate the requirement for the screening wall. Are there any, does anyone care to give us any commentary or present this item? Or are there any questions?
That's a property that, I'm on that property up there. It's what I'm just.
Yes, ma'am. And that property, I think those two buildings are only about 10 In that property, I think those two buildings are only about 10 to 12 feet apart, with a sidewalk that runs, runs through the middle, and the sidewalk takes a little jog, it's not perfectly straight. And in front of the residential property, there, or beside residential property, there's a chain link fence and some more, I think it's been fencing around.
Of course, the Van Alstine leader was toward this.
That, that's right. And the backyard there is fenced off already.
Right.
Okay. Any, any questions? Any more comments? Did I let you finish? I'm sorry.
No, that's all. I just wanted to make sure what we were talking about.
Okay.
So Van Alstine, the Dallas Avenue, and the Board Office District.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Any from council?
Well, we'll move on then to the items for consideration, which is basically the same item. But it's for the council to consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as Divisions Van Alstine Block 3, Lot East 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 250 North Dallas Avenue and 278 North Dallas Avenue, currently Zoned Commercial District, slash, one. For variances to the Van Alstine Code of Ordinances, Section 46, 37, dash, 37, D, in parentheses, area setback height and coverage regulations, to allow the buildings to remain as they are and eliminate the screening wall requirement between the commercial and residential properties.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the screening wall requirement.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion among council? All right, I see no hands. All in favor? It is unanimous, and so the requirement for a screening wall is eliminated.
Mayor, if I may, there were kind of two parts to eliminate the screening wall, but also that the buildings will remain as they are, kind of in the last sentence there of the item, so you need to do.
Okay, I didn't catch that, that second part, that distinction. Does that change anything for anyone on the council?
Do we need a separate motion for that?
You want me to amend my motion?
Sure.
Okay. I make a motion to allow the buildings to remain as they are and to eliminate the screening wall requirement between commercial and residential properties.
Is there a second? And we have a second to the amended motion. All in favor? All right, it is unanimous once again.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
All right, that is item number six, and we have a motion and a second to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there any discussion? I see no hands. All in favor? It is unanimous, and so we are adjourned from the zoning board of adjustment meeting, and we will move on to a regular city council meeting. And the time is 9:01. Are there any, are there any citizens' communications? Jennifer had to leave, so I don't know. Did anyone fill out the citizens' communication? Anyone want to have a comment? Okay, all right, I see none. So I'm going to say there are no citizens' communications. And so we'll move on to, well, there are no public hearings. That was item number three. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
And I want to remove some items off of the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
All right, and which ones are those?
I want to remove item four and six, seven, eight.
All right, those four items will be removed from the consent agenda, and those will be the first ones that we approach during the regular agenda. Now, as to consent agenda items, five, nine, 10, and 11, is there a motion? Do we need to discuss any of these?
I make a motion that we approve on the consent agenda items five, nine, 10, and 11.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any, any discussion? Any questions among council? I see no hands. All in favor? It is unanimous, and so those items are approved. Now we'll move, we're going to back up to item number four, which is consider and take action necessary, take any action necessary. I'm sorry, is there some, oh. Consider and take any action necessary regarding minutes from the June 27th, 2017, special call meetings, July 10, 2017, or, yeah, 2017 work session meeting, July 11th, regular meeting, July 13, 2017, budget work session meeting, and July 11th, 2017, special called meeting.
July 18th.
Pardon me, July 18th.
Yeah, I just, the reason I wanted to discuss is.
I'm sorry, I don't need to interrupt. You have to get so close to these things or they don't work at all. Pardon me?
Is it on? Okay. The only item I wanted to discuss on there was the July 11 minutes. Do we have any commentary as to why item five? It just says no public hearing held. Is there, why? Do we not have to have that? Was there no comment made on there as to why that thing has gone away and we've never seen it again, haven't either?
We're talking about that in the book.
On the July 11, sorry, the July 11 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Item number five, it just says removed. Was there no comment as to why we removed that?
I believe the publication did not occur, if that's what you're regarding.
That's correct. It wasn't published in time, the notice wasn't sufficient.
Okay. I would like to see this put on there, other than no public hearing held, as to why we did not. The minutes are really for things that happened at the meeting and maybe, I don't know, I don't remember if a statement was made or what, but you don't usually add outside explanations or information into the record of the meeting itself.
For the public meeting part or for the agenda part? I mean, to me, it's lacking in information. If, if we stated on there why we did not, why we pulled it from the, the agenda, why would we not record why we pulled it from the agenda?
I just say, I don't remember what was stated. I was just saying, the minutes shouldn't reflect anything more than what was stated.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking. Did we not make a statement at that meeting about why that was moved?
You know, I'd have to go back and look at the tape to make sure, but I don't think that I did. I think we just bypassed it. That was my doing.
Okay. That was the only question I have.
All right, then we're ready to move on to, I remember.
We need to make a motion, ma'am.
Oh.
If that's the only question, I will make a motion that we approve, number four, of the June 27th, special call meeting, July 10th, work session meeting, July the 11th, regular meeting, July the 13th, budget work session, and July the 18th, special call meeting, that we approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all those minutes. Second, ma'am. We have a second. Is there any more discussion? See no hands. All in favor? It is unanimous. All those minutes are approved. Now we're moving on to item number six. Consider and take any action necessary regarding reappointing Chris and I, I made, Chris Beckerer and appointing Paul Hickson and James Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board. Is there any, any discussion? Any questions on that? Is there a motion?
I'll make.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint, or that, yeah, that we reappoint Chris Becker and appoint Paul Hickson and James Lewis to Parks and Recreation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See no hands. Call for both. All in favor? It is unanimous. And so those three are appointed, Chris Becker, Paul Hickson, and James Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Board. Moving on to item seven. Consider and take any action necessary regarding reappointing Colin Flynn, Robert Lewis, Mark Rock, and Wayne Womack to the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation Board of Directors.
There were no CDC minutes provided that said that they were approved by the board. I would rather that we tabled this until they get the right information to us. Do I need to make a motion to table this?
Yes, we have a motion to table this item for lack of information in the pack. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Any, any further discussion among council? I see no hand.
Robert, you're on this board, right?
Yes, I think I probably have to abstain.
Why would you have to abstain?
Or do I have to abstain? Do I have to abstain since someone?
No, council members are allowed to be on that board.
I'll say.
My, my question to Robert is, did y'all have a meeting? Are y'all, have you re-judged?
Yeah, we haven't really been discussed it. We discussed who all was, who all was up for reappointment. We discussed what terms were left. You know, ones that are laid, it's on the board, there's three that haven't laid in terms that roll off next year or in the next board or this year. I mean, it was discussed.
The point is, is that we are not consistent in our paperwork, and I'm getting very annoyed about the lack of consistency. Some people did the right things and others didn't. And I don't know why we have to keep finding out that these things aren't done the right way. And I don't see any pressing need to get this done. So I'm, I'm like, no, the paperwork's not here, let's table it, and when they bring the right paperwork, you can move forward.
Can, can we bring it to the, always on that?
I just want the paperwork.
All right, we have a motion on the table and a second. And the motion is to table this item until, what did we say? Until August 29th. And that's, okay, that's a special call meeting.
Special call.
No, I think I actually, what I think I'm supposed to say. All right. Any, any more discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of tabling this item until August 29th at the special call meeting on that evening? All right, I'm sorry, we have one, two. All right, we have four, all opposed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, you quoted four, okay. Well, it's unanimous. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, let's move on to item number eight. Consider and take any action necessary regarding reappointment, reappointing James Lewis to serve a second term on the Van Alstine Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
And for the same reason, I make a motion, we table this to the August 29th special call meeting, because there's no minutes in here that the board shows approving the reappointment of James Lewis.
All right, is there a second to table this? All right, we have a second to table this. Oh, no, wait.
Wait, wait a minute. It is.
They have Judy Ballard on there, but they don't have James Lewis.
All right, well, there's no, is there any further discussion? If not, we're.
I mean, if we have one individual, we approve that individual.
We'll be.
And then table the next one.
Yeah, because they approved for minutes on the next one we have on here. They approved him, they just, we do James Lewis.
And we've already.
And it's a separate item on here.
On this consent agenda, we've already made, we've already approved item number nine.
Could we table it? Are we tabling it to the same reason? Is there a motion?
No, I forgot. We have, we have a motion regarding item number eight. We have a motion and a second to table this item, and we would need, will it be on the same, the same agenda? August 29th, a special meeting. And so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Y'all getting along?
Yes.
I'm like, is EDC, y'all happy with, everybody got? So it's just an administrative thing, right?
It was, it was all my fault. I did not know that reappointments had to have the vote. We did the same thing that the justice said, that we discussed it in the meeting, James said he wanted to reapply. I did not know it had to have an official vote, so it's my mistake. So I know next time.
But are y'all getting along, everybody's happy?
It's great, yeah. We'll come back to you on the 29th with the minutes.
All right, we have four votes, four tabling. It is unanimous to table this item until August 29th. All right, and now we move on to the regular agenda or the non-consent agenda. Item number 12. Consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of the Van Alstine Economic Development Corporation fiscal year 2017-2018 budget and receive a report from the director of the Van Alstine Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening, I'm hopeful. Mr. Mayor, it has come to my attention that you guys didn't get my full budget with my agenda submission. Can you hear me okay? Do I need to talk into that mic?
I think these folks, there you go. You get more.
You guys hear me okay?
You get to use a mic.
I get to use a mic. There's a cordless one.
Maybe. Hello, hello. Hello, is there a green light on?
Hello?
There you go.
I have a podium, so I don't have my, I don't have a place to put all my paperwork. First, let me just say, I asked Jennifer if I could have a few minutes just to talk to you guys, because I would like to just tell you briefly what we do at the EDC and also for the audience, I'm not sure, since the council is new and I've not had the opportunity to speak before you other than just to announce our recent project, I haven't really had the opportunity to tell you exactly what we do at the EDC. So just so people will know, what we do is we focus primarily on industry and manufacturers. So we're all about creating jobs, primary jobs, and also the capital investment that we bring to the community. So we are totally different from the CDC, which is the Community Development Corporation. They're type A, they're type B. We have a five-member board of directors, they have a seven-member board of directors. We're both set up very differently through the local government code, the way that we're set up to operate, different projects that we are allowed to do, the way that we present them to you guys. You guys are responsible for appointing our board members the way that they've done it in the past, and we will. You guys are responsible for appointing our board members, the way that they've done it in the past and we will continue to do it that way. It's the board votes on new board members and brings them to the council for the council to approve, deny, or whatever, except for the board. We also bring our budget to you guys, and then when we have projects, we bring them to you for your sign-offs if we're doing any kind of incentives or anything of that fashion. So, when I came on board here, it's been a while since there's been a director at the EDC, so there's been a lot of things neglected and so I've been building the program to get it to where it is. I think we've got a lot accomplished in the short time that I've been here. We have a pretty small budget, but that is increasing. The revenues or the sales taxes are increasing monthly. And so there's a lot of different areas that I've been focused on, but one of the things that I really want to do is focus in on our business retention expansion program. That has been neglected in Van Alstine. And historically, that's where you get your growth. You don't want to, you know, you, you want to dance with one that brought you, and you've got the existing businesses here, so you want to try to build relationships with those businesses and cultivate them. And hopefully you can find partner businesses that work for them, resources or whatever, and maybe you can help them grow their business. And so, that's something that I really want to look at expanding here because that has not been done in Van Alstine. So it's not just about recruiting new companies. Like, we do have the two new companies that we've gotten since I've been here is the Locor and the Ford Performance. So that's great, that's brand-new dollars in the community, that's new primary jobs, that's fabulous, that's what we're all about. But we also want to make sure that we're taking care of Foxworth and, you know, now that Locor's here, we want them to know that we're, you know, we're glad they're a partner for us and we want to keep helping them as we go forward. So we're really all about building relationships with the businesses that are here and trying to find out how we can be an advocate for them and help them, you know, grow their business and increase their employment or their investment in the community, bring in new machinery or whatever. And so one of the things you'll find out, and Lee found this out when he went to his training, is that we use code words when we got a project because we, and that's not something they did before I got here either, but we keep all of our projects very confidential until it gets to the point where we're able to come before you as council and make that announcement to you. There's several reasons for that. You don't want to jeopardize the company, first of all. They may have a position where they're either looking at purchasing land or they're leaving another community to come here. So there's several reasons for that, and then another thing, you don't want to tip off your neighbor that they may come try to recruit them. And then also, sometimes it just blows a deal if it gets out, you know, when they find out they're actually talking about their projects and they pull out. So I've seen that happen too. So you'll see on our agendas that we have codenamed, we've got it in executive session or whatever, and that's the reason why, is that we just respect their privacy until it gets to the end of it. But, so just wanted to tell you about that and then talk to you about our budget a little bit. One of the things that I've been asking for since I got here is a strategic plan. And so we did budget for that in the coming year. It'll be a little bit different than what the city is doing with their comprehensive plan. It'll still be working towards the industrial and everything, but it gives us more an internal focus of where we want to head as the EDC, like, and we will talk to the stakeholders as part of that. So the council will be involved in that, CDC will be involved in that, Chamber, you know, probably get some of the bankers and different people in the community, the school district. A lot of people involved in it to find out where we really want to head as a city because right now we don't really have a target. So we, you know, we got to have a game plan so we can be successful, and that's something that I think. So that's my two priorities for the coming year is the, getting the business retention expansion program off the ground and then doing the strategic plan.
Any questions?
Are we just asking questions on the budget?
Yeah.
Can you just tell me what basis you used for your sales tax revenue, the monthly amount? Is that just based on what's been coming in now?
Well, from what I was told, this is, and actually, this is the first time I've prepared the budget for the EDC because I wasn't here last year when they did that. So I was told that the city generally provides the, the projection for the sales tax revenue. But I, I talked to the city and the city manager said that he wanted us to really do that calculation going forward. And so the way we arrived at that figure, we basically, we were very conservative. We actually budgeted a little less than what CDC put in their budget. And we will actually collect the equal amounts, but we took actuals that we got this year for the months that we've already collected, and then we went to the actuals from last year for the last three months. So we know that that number's going to increase, but we didn't, we didn't jack it up. We just thought, well, we'll come in better than, than we planned, so we were real conservative on that.
And then you're obviously proposing a budget with a deficit.
Yes, ma'am, we are, and actually, it's a lower deficit than what it was proposed at last year, believe it or not. Last year it was considerable, a higher deficit than it is this year, and actually, we're predicted to come in under budget. So I'm thinking that we're going to make that up. That's the plan. By the end of the year, we'll make up that negative number, and that's what we're hoping for next year as well.
Just by growth over the year is what you're looking to make up that extra?
Yes.
It's about third.
So.
That's really not a budget, that's kind of a forecast. So if you went, if you went with the CDC, if you went with the same tax revenue as the CDC, would it bring it more to a balanced budget?
No, it would not, and it's hard to know if the CDC doesn't have a balanced budget either, as I recall.
That's correct.
Yes. And it typically has not been a balanced budget in years past. I'm not sure why, and it's, I guess, because you really can't solidly predict, predict what your sales tax income is going to be. It fluctuates, it also follows the cycles, you know, you'll have back-to-school sales, which will, you know, bring it up, Christmas, those type of things.
You know, how many years have we been operating at a deficit? Because that can't last very long.
No, I mean, uh, not, not as a city council member, just as a citizen, seeing, seeing any, and this goes to CDC, so you'll go there and get the same question. Seeing anything that work, that collects tax dollars running in a deficit is very difficult for me. Even though it's a nonprofit, it's a Class A, Class A corporation, it's still a business, and it needs to be a refined budget. So fluffing the revenue and knowing that you're going to get more, and then saying, we're going to make it up at the end, that's not accurate, that's, that.
But we didn't fluff the revenue.
But you're saying, but you're saying you're.
We took actuals that we actually earned this year. And then we took, for the, the remaining three months of this year, we don't have those numbers, so we use the actuals from last year. So these are historical numbers, and it's increased each month.
How about your actuals to date? Are you at a deficit on your actuals to date?
No, no, no. To date, we have collected $124,822. That's through July. I don't have the August sales tax yield.
What's the expenses?
The expenses.
Because if you're three-quarters through the year, you brought in 120, whatever that was.
So, the actual that I have spent is 127 through July.
So you're about zero?
Right now, and that's, so that is our, so that's why I'm thinking that we're going to be like 25K under budget by the end of the year.
Okay, but the budget is not reflecting your current experience of being about to zero.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's kind of crazy. And like I said, this is my first experience with it, so.
Hey, me too. There we go.
And you know, I've already made a mistake on my reappointment of a board member, so.
Yeah, I, I think you guys really want to try and start with zero.
Yeah.
Take it out somewhere.
It need, in my, in my opinion, it needs to be, if you are a corporation. What, my understanding is that city council does, like you said, we appoint the members and to the corporation, and it truly is a corporation, and the director and the board members are part of the corporation. You're the director, so you're employed by the corporation.
Right.
But you answer to your board.
Correct.
So the only thing that, the only authority that we have over EDC and CDC is just the appointment of the members. You're not elected or anything else, but if somebody comes in and says, hey, and just being brass tacks, we want to make sure that the EDC is right. We're looking at a property tax increase because capital are left, which means we need more business in town so that we can take our effective rate back down and cost the taxpayers and the constituents less money. So we're fixing to take a hit as council in raising tax rate. We need the EDC to bring jobs and get that back down.
And you realize we got Locor in really quickly.
I understand that.
Okay.
I want more.
Me too. You said, actually, you're expecting you might have a profit of $25,000 this year. So are you, were you thinking that that was just cash, that then you rolled over to your 44 for the next year and you brought it down?
Yes, and I think that we're very conservative on our, our expected revenues. I mean, we didn't, you know, we didn't factor it in a 5% increase monthly or anything like that. I mean, we just took what we did actually, and historically, we've seen that every month they've increased. So.
I think you need to come to the balance.
I, I would agree with that. I would like to hear a balance budget.
Can I ask Karen, she's been on the board quite some time, have you guys ever balanced this budget?
No, it has never been balanced.
Let's be a first. Let's balance the budget and present at zero.
Karen, I got a question for you. Um, has there ever been a balanced budget? Have y'all just worked off cash flow off of the following year? Or has it, has, have y'all always just come in?
It's always come in under. We have never, we know that if we should not meet that, we have money in the bank to cover it. It's not that we would be in debt or anything like that. It can be covered.
Right, so hold on a second, so you, you do have a portion that you can carry over.
Yes.
A portion of your budget, not for savings, but for contingency, things of that nature. And you have a portion of your budget that you can save for incentives to others for coming, going, however, however that, whatever projects, chicken, that you have, that you have, that you have to deal, that you have to deal with, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, keep going, or is that it?
Well, we've never blown the budget. We've never, we've always met, and it's been under what was.
I mean, this is just a planning exercise.
It is.
So to me, to come in with one that says a negative every year, it's like, why not then make it come in at zero?
It's just, it hasn't been done.
And I don't know why. Doesn't make sense to me to have a budget that always says we come, we overspend.
We were.
Especially when you're telling me you do the opposite, so it just means that the budget's not very good.
Well, and, and I actually, coming into the budget that they created before I got here, I thought it was not very good because it didn't allow for a lot of the things that I wanted to see done or different. You know, because the board did it last year, and they did it without having any employees, so it changes not enough the dynamics when you actually have a person in the office that uses paper and ink, and, you know, it, it changes things, and so.
Do, do we have an issue if we do not approve this budget? Are we forced to approve this budget? Then, can we, I'd like to make a motion and to come back on the zero budget.
I'll say it back.
So in order to do that, we're going to have to change the way we calculate our sales tax revenue. Then do that, do it.
It's all preparation. It, it's, it's what you do, so however you do it, do it, that's, that's.
Do it.
Y'all got the freedom to do it.
And if you think that that's the right revenue, then cut your expenses.
Well, we have a motion on the table and, and a second. Is there any? Karen, I know we have some more discussion among council.
Well, okay, the purpose of this is to use the sales tax revenue to develop economically, develop businesses, bring jobs to the, to the community. It's not to sit there and stockpile cash. So if you come back with a zero balance every year, you're basically sitting there holding the $300,000 on the flip side. So naturally, you would want to spend some of that excess if you had the opportunity to bring more industry into the community.
And I, I agree, but this is a budget of expenditures, right, and roughly what revenue? So it's just showing that you know how to not overspend, because I agree with you, but.
No, I've got you. Any surplus that they have, they would love to spend, but. Correct, but they're talking to Karen, I mean, if they're looking at coming in $10,000 to $15,000 in the green, and they're at a negative 40 right now, that's a $60,000 swing. That's, that's more than just a little bit of money, that's, that's a lot of money.
And we only get half the picture. This just says, do I know how to plan? You know, my expenditures based on what I think's coming in, and we never get to know how well they do against it, except that we just ask, well, how did you do? Are you really coming in every year as a negative? And then they're saying, no. So this kind of tells me that the budgets aren't very good because it's actually a minus 40-some plus the 25 they're over. It's a swing of 65, which is almost half their revenue.
No, it's just the opposite. If you have the 25, the 25's not built into it. The 25 is sitting there in last year's.
Right.
Okay, it isn't over, it's a surplus.
Right, but they said, let's say, for instance, they, they came in over 25, but they said they were going to be minus 45, then you got a $70,000 variance.
And that's where, and that's where the cash starts stockpiling. And it shouldn't be available because every year, you may not get a Locor to come. One year you may have two Locors.
But this isn't a cash flow view. This isn't a cash flow view. This just says, and I spend it to what I think my revenue is for that period. So all I'm saying is, if this is about trying to plan your expenditures, then let's make it that you plan to what you think the revenue is.
Okay, she, she said that she's, she's planning, they're being conservative and they're planning on last year's. Okay, assuming nothing comes in, we're going to have a shortfall of $43,000, which. Okay, assuming nothing comes in, we're gonna have a shortfall of 43,000 dollars, which they said that's never happened.
Right.
Cause they've always been able to bring something. So to be conservative, they're saying, worst case scenario, if nothing happens, we'll use 43,000 dollars of our cash considering this to cover these expenses.
It's that.
Okay, so I would recommend, maybe they develop a sources and uses statement off of their balance sheet that would show that there is adequate funds or sources there to cover an anticipated shortfall.
Yeah, like our reserves, is that what you're saying? Yeah, to show that we have the money in the bank.
I mean, it gets down to the priority, it gets down to, what was the exercise supposed to do? Because honestly, I'm just sitting there going, well, you're not very good at budgeting. That doesn't really give us the whole picture of what they're doing.
Let's put it so, please. We do not need to see the reserve of the EDC. We do not need to see that at all.
Right.
Because that becomes public record, and that's the marketing shit, and we do not need to see that. So, in, in regards to, she's on, yeah, I'd like to see it zero. If, we're asking Brad, we're asking anybody else to do it. I mean, why? Nobody else gets to operate it, maybe except she's on.
I mean, most people don't budget to be a minus, so...
Um, so, I don't know, what's the, how do, you know, the bottom of the portion guarantee of? It's just, let's see if it...
Best practice is to budget to zero.
Well, we have a motion and a second. We've had some discussions, is there any discussion further down the table? Susan?
Please repeat the motion, please.
The, the motion is whether or not to approve, um, their, their budget, the budget that's been...
No, the motion is to table it.
I see, the motion is to table it, um, and, and for them to add a later date, bring back, well, we have to decide on a date.
We have, yeah, they're meeting on the AMH.
Okay. To bring back balanced budgets and...
But I don't want to have to say that.
Can we set that on the 18th? Is there any motion?
Do the number. Yes, to have enough time.
I think you were trying to keep that one short to get to the football game.
I'm sorry.
I think you were trying to keep that one short to get to the football game.
The 18th meeting needs to be for the tax rate over, the 29th is a special call.
Don't worry, they'll have, they'll be able to have another EDC meeting for it.
All right, so, okay. All right, so, um, I, I think the motion then is, correct me if I'm wrong, to table this item until August 29th and to allow them to work out the balance today. And is that also...
That's, that's the motion.
We have a second on that? Um, all in, well, any more discussing? Okay, all in favor of, of tabling this? We have two in favor, all opposed? You're sustaining?
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, okay, um, all right, so we, yeah, I guess the motion's been tabled, passed, we have two to one. So it's tabled until the 29th. All right, then. Uh, we move on to item number 13. Considering taking the action necessary, oops, considering taking the action necessary regarding approval of the Van Alstine Community Development Corporation fiscal year 2017 dash 2018. But, we have a presenter?
Yeah, I'll see you.
Okay.
Uh, if you don't know me, I'm Rodney Williams, I'm the CDC director.
I have an in the microphone.
Can you hear me? Do I need it?
Give me a mic.
Hello? Okay, my name is Rodney Williams, I'm the CDC director, and, uh, I've been on the job for a whole month, so bear with me. Um, I will say that we've got a break of work. I'd like to point out Colin Plinter, our board president, Wayne Womack, and Chris Dorff. Actually, these guys handle, and Robert Dastin, excuse me. Uh, these guys will handle the budget before I got here. Uh, not a whole lot for me to do, but I'm gonna try to run it through the best I can. And I'm gonna make it real simple. Uh, you'll see that we have a $64,000 deficit. Reason for that, we're actually carrying over $7,000 from this year in commitments that we haven't yet spent. Uh, $9,000 for Park Master Plan, we have not yet paid for that. $16,000 we've committed to the Gateway Master Plan project, uh, and just to pay. The facade program, that's the CDC program in which we basically encourage, right now, central business district businesses to upgrade their facade, unify the town. We match them up to $10,000, so if they spend five, we spend five. And, uh, we've actually increased that this year, so we've got $20,000 for carrying over. And then there's another $25,000 we've committed to the Shared Use Path project that, for obvious reasons, we haven't disbursed those funds yet. So if that's $7,000, if you move that $7,000 over to the next budget, we're actually $5,000 on the budget. And with that, I'll add a question. And our revenues, by the way, are based on a trailing 12-month figure, so that's where we come up with our sales tax revenue of 150.
So...
The sales tax revenue is based on trailing 12 months, so we figured, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, looked at the 12 months before, rolled that forward, and that's where we based our, our revenue that we're going for sales tax.
So, okay.
Can you tell me what kind of advertising you're doing for $1,700 a month, and what did you spend last year?
We spent about $12,000 last year, we're required, at the, or it be, we're required to advertise, use that, sales and use tax money. Um, last year, we had the same thing with $20,000 budget, we have completely spent about $12,000 in total. Uh, the majority of it is, we're supposed to be doing this advertising in the city of Van Alstine. Typically, it's fall deroll, some of the other things, and the activities that we do in the area.
I heard fall deroll, I heard...
I did receive exact numbers, but that's about what we spent this year, $12,000.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just not aware even as a citizen what CDC advertises for, so I, I know what fall deroll is.
We also did our, uh, Van Alstine, the city of Van Alstine, uh, tri-fold brochures that went out to, uh, the Texas visitor centers that are at most of the local businesses. Um, that was another, I think, $4,000 or $5,000 spending in total to, 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 hopefully. Um, so, and those are the things that we're, we're trying to do.
Okay, so you did 12,000, about 12,000 in 2017?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you updated, and then you just divided by 12.
No, we, we left it at 20,000, we just did, spent the full 20,000 in, in...
Okay, it's not like it's actually monthly charged, you just spent it out over 12.
Okay.
What, what is parks, right? What is parks for projects? I'm reading that right.
Um, as the Parks Department mentioned earlier, we are paying for their, their parks plan. They came to us for $9,000, we end up being a Santa Claus, we end up being Santa Claus. Most, most of the departments come to us, they're asking for money to better, uh, the city of Van Alstine. Uh, that's why we're sharing in the cost for the Gateway Plan, we're sharing in the cost for the Parks Rec Plan, we're sharing in the cost for the hike and bike trail. Uh, that's where the 90% of our costs went.
Okay, and I see you also have the rail cars. What are we doing for $10,000 for the rail cars?
Um, it's, it's happening slowly, but the rail cars are getting elevated.
Rail stop, rail stop. Railroad stop.
The chamber railroad cars, where the fall deroll and shell is, that's...
What, what was your budget last year for projects? Do you know?
Which projects?
Just overall. Cause I think I heard a lot not happen, and it's rolling over.
No, ma'am. Uh, we came to the board in April and asked for additional $55,000. We came to the board and asked for additional $55,000, because we had spent a bunch of our money already, um, for facade programs and other things, and we knew we were gonna be in shortfall, so we had not planned anything for parks last year. So then we came, so in April, we came to you and asked for an additional $9,000, I believe it was $55,000 in total, it got approved in April. So that's where the money's, so, in total, this year, we are actually under budgeted by about $64,000. We're carrying forward about $70,000 from this year to next year. And then, so in this year, we're, and the current year budget that you presented, that's where the shortfall is.
And then what is your computer maintenance and repair, that's $3,000?
It's about $3,000, because at this point in time, we have one computer for the two employees, and we're looking at a new computer and getting, uh, the software and everything else updated on the old computers.
Good, cause that looks like several computers, okay.
Now, if it works out right, you'll get the computer free, and we won't have to worry about that budget anymore.
And then, you know, it's getting to be a pet peeve of mine, because the only thing about this thing that really annoyed me is there's no minute, no minutes saying that this one's approved.
We'll provide it next month.
Yeah, and then I'm also down to, it doesn't say zero at the bottom. So I'm kinda like, what's good for one, not a work for the other? And I'd like to see the minutes.
I'll speak to this, and so I put that part of the budget again. Once again, if the rest of the city doesn't come to us and ask for $70,000, our budget balances. So if you don't want us to pay for the Gateway Plan, you don't wanna pay us, us to pay for the hike and bike trail, if you don't want us to pay for the, the rest of the Parks Rec Board, their master plan, we can do that, we can stop paying for those things. But I don't believe that is what the city council wants.
Well, I can see, cause I don't, I don't come to you and ask you for money.
No, you don't.
Do you not approve those things yourself?
Yes, ma'am, and then once again, we can say no.
Well, that's what you're supposed to do.
So you don't want a master plan?
It's not my, you're the advisory board, so are you saying you're spending money based on what we told you to do?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, personally, I didn't, cause I knew. But is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that the city's telling you what you, what we want you to spend your money on?
Yes, ma'am.
But tho, but those projects fall within the CDC purview for, for type B corporations, correct?
Correct.
So, and the $64,000 that you're sitting on the budget right now, if you're carrying 70 over, if you're carrying 70 over...
Well, we'll carry 60 something over, 70 over, yes.
So you're...
We're close to breviation, ma'am.
Massaman is in a, in a, what, $2,000 maybe over? That's it, which is enough for reserves, savings?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, sorry.
If the $70,000 that was appropriated last year had been spent, it would not be built into this budget, and it would be a surplus of 54,000.
Correct.
56,000, 54,000.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned with an advisory board telling me that they would make a different recommendation.
Not, not everybody.
I mean, sorry, corporations, you're correct.
Two totally different things.
But we aren't supposed to tell them what they must do, is what I'm hearing, is that council is telling them that they must spend their money on.
Their approach, their ask, and they do it in a form of a grant.
But it's their decision to do that. It's their decision to do that. Okay, so I'm a little concerned being told that this body told them what to spend their money on.
Maybe the wording wasn't right, their approach.
I don't know, it sounded pretty adamant.
Once again, we, we could say no, and then that money would then ultimately come out of the, the city's budget somewhere.
Right.
And then we would have to come up with another plan or another project to spend our money on, which would be great.
Right.
I mean, Suzanne, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think the board has a problem with that at that point in time. We could say no, then it comes falls back in your lap if, if you say, okay, we're gonna pay for the Gateway Plan, then you pay for the Gateway Plan.
Right.
We don't share those costs.
And there could be a time when y'all have a strategic, when the CDC has a strategic plan, and you get something on the books that you chase after, that you wanna go, and we approach you with a project and say, hey, can you help out with this? And you say, we really don't have the capacity to do it at that time. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you, you've accepted, or you've, um, what you've done is you've approved projects that, that have been asked of, and then, and then somehow, the money doesn't get spent, or what hap, what, what doesn't happen is, um, for instance, maybe Parks and Rec doesn't go out and, and get their bids on this particular project. Now, you've set some money aside to go ahead and pay for this project, but they haven't gone out, got their bids, they haven't come back to you with a, with a, with an amount so that you can write a check. Is that, and so you get stuck with, but rather than put the money back in your, in your assets, whatever your total assets are, you carry it forward as kind of an obligation.
Yes, sir.
Is that fair to say? So it would assist you, it would help you, if once you've agreed to, uh, to fund a project, um, the people who ask you for those funds would, would get it done, get the bids done, um, get a figure back to you that you can write a check for.
Yes, sir.
Um, CDC is our go-to board. And then, and things come up during the year that there are not funds account allocated for, that the CDC has approached for these, and they provide those funds. And it would be funds for things that we really didn't even know were going to happen, or that we were going to need. So, a, a lot of the boards, and you, you submit that go-to board, and I don't know any other way to explain it, except when there's not the funds there, they, they'll, they'll...
Well, and I, I should say, I, I don't mean to be picking on Parks and Rec, because Parks and Rec, in the city's budget, gets very little money. They don't have money for projects, just a little bit of maintenance, otherwise, they, they depend on the CDC almost completely um, for, for projects that they, that they need to get done. So, I, it's, I, I didn't mean to, to pick on, on Parks and Rec, but they, because their budget is so small, they...
They need more money.
Yeah, they depend on CDC, have them.
It, well, and, and when I look at the projects, and I think I hear what you're saying, but I also go back and say, is CDC not about trying to bring in small business? And I look at, no?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
Community development, right? And, and small, but small commercial.
Small commercial business. So the question that comes out of that is, that's where we're hurting, and I'm looking at the projects, and there's nothing on there except for facade.
That's the majority of the facade program.
That doesn't bring in business, that doesn't fill up our, our buildings.
That's why we hired Rodney.
Yeah, but we're not giving him any money to go do anything with it. He just has to go sell it. But there's no projects to help you bring it, I mean, we are losing businesses in this space. You have a brutal job this coming year, and there's no project money on here that focuses on the fact that we have a lot of vacancies in our small spaces.
Well, we're not allowed to the CDC to get taxes in, right? So, it is marketing, it's selling Van Alstine, it's selling our business environment, and that's what I've been hired to do. Uh, and I'm focusing on, you know, rebranding our marketing, retargeting our marketing efforts, but, yeah, you're right. I mean, it's, it's really a sales job, and I know we're hurting, um, not just in the CBD, but all around, so hopefully, you know, these guys brought me in to, to change that, and I'm gonna change that, and hopefully, it's gonna be a different picture next year.
So all you have is an advertising budget and some marketing. So you have $23,000 to go sell a whole heck of a lot of space.
And a contingent budget, yes, yeah, but...
Oh, is that the contingent project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you do have a little bit more money in there to go do something.
Right, I mean, we're commercial retail, we're also qualitying a lot of projects, so it's, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword there, but, um, you know, I feel like if the budget's there, it's fine, I don't think we need a whole lot more in our projects to really get this done. It's, it's really guerrilla marketing, and, uh, that's my primary...
Can you make the paper, Zero? Can you make it a balanced budget?
I can go on projects, I'll...
Take them off.
I mean, I can, I can just do a, a positive number.
Well, but, but you've got the carryover, right?
Pardon me?
You've got the carryover, right?
Well, it's still gotta be in budget, it's still gotta move along.
Why isn't our cash on hand then?
I've got, we've got $33,000, $330,000 in cash.
Well, it's got in the cash here.
No, that, that cash on hand is not part of the balance sheet, that's cash in, no. If that's the number you're looking at at the top. Like I said, we're, we're, we're under budgeted by about $64,000 right now. That's really where we're at. And it's up to you, if you don't wanna approve it, that's fine.
So, so, correct?
Well, these projects you have on there were actually carryovers from last year, so the commitment was in there last year.
Pardon me?
The commitment was in there.
Correct.
So we could take them off. They were committed to last year.
Yeah, but then it's gonna, it's gonna show up as an expense, I'm gonna show up as I'm being drastically over budgeted.
Yeah, but the money for them was in last year's budget.
And in this year, we're missing the budget too.
Yeah, but we can't bring over... Yeah, but we can't bring over the, can't bring over the revenue side to match it. That's what I'm saying, they were in last year's budget.
Things approved and shorted and further spent.
And it is, we're still approving it today. The projects were approved individually, right? This budget isn't approved to approve your expenditures of projects.
And that budget now? It's gotta get approved by you?
Right. Which we already did approve these.
How you approved?
Actually, I approved last year, so if, so if he's gonna-
You have to bury them over.
Correct. And if he takes them off, then he's not approved to spend eight hundred and thirty-three dollars a month on-
Yeah, he was, he was approved last year.
But he's not approved.
And not approved in this current year budget.
So if we're requiring for one, should we not require for the other?
I would think that if, to, to understand what you're saying, if we require for one, we should require for the other. Right. I also understand that the capacity of the CDC is totally different to the capacity of the EDC. They're, they're two different, they're two different budgets.
The city also comes to us and asks us usually for about the same thing, about the score, a third of the master plan, uh, the, the, uh, the Gateway Plan. Sure, these have, I mean, they come to us and third, just like they do them, other than we don't do, you know, the commercial retail.
No, I got you, but you have no problem saying no, because y'all took the cheap path off.
But the, the reason they can do it though is because they don't have projects in there. They have projects, I still don't understand, if was, was the facade fund approved last year for thirty-five thousand dollars? Or is this another thirty-five thousand dollars?
It was approved at thirty-five thousand dollars. Actually was, yeah, it was thirty-five thousand dollars, correct. And of which we spent fifteen thousand dollars, and we've already approved another twenty, which would get us to thirty-five thousand dollars.
But the revenue that went with it was from last year?
Correct, so it's sitting in the bank.
That's what I'm saying. It was budgeted last year and went against last year's revenue.
No, the, we haven't expensed anything yet.
I know, the expense part, but, but you did have that expense on there last year, and you have the revenue that went with it, because you now have leftover funds sitting in the bank.
There's no expense on our, on our balance sheet, or I'm just getting our income statement.
It's, the cash is sitting there.
The budget is there. The income is there, but the expense is not there. That's what, that's where we're stuck on the seventy thousand dollars. So if we, if we went, if we went forward with removing the seventy thousand dollars from that budget, then we would be seventy thousand dollars over budgeted and spending for fiscal year eighteen. Because we have seventy thousand dollars expense. The expense would hit this year, not in current year.
You lost, man, I'm wrong, I'm, I'm, it may be a dead horse, it may get pumped a couple more times, but I'm, I'm trying my best to figure it out. But, and you were, and I was right there with you, right up until the very end.
Okay, we, we budgeted additional fifty-five thousand dollars in, which thirty-five thousand dollars was put in the center program. It's budgeted, but it hasn't been expensed.
Correct.
Correct. So it would be showing a net surplus last year of seventy thousand.
A net surplus of seventy thousand for last year.
Correct.
Because the money is spent, it's been over.
Hasn't been expensed, so it's, it's sitting in our savings account and my market.
Right, got you. So we got seventy thousand dollars appropriated.
Correct, but budget, but, but our budget year for seventeen, eighteen starts with zero.
Correct.
If it started with seventy.
If it started with seventy, we would be, we would be, because we're, we're expensing-
I got you, but when you say it's sitting in the bank, and you start from zero, people start thinking we're working seven thousand dollars.
Cash is in the bank, income and expenses are.
That's why I keep saying this is a budgeting exercise, and, and you have that revenue that's paying for that expense, whether it, it was already-
You're, you're mixing up revenue, revenue and cash. Revenue is, was recorded in this current year, cash is sitting there.
And I don't think revenue and all that stuff comes in this exercise. This says, for the money that comes this year, what other things are you going to add?
And the timeline says revenue and sales tax revenue.
Can I make a comment?
We're making a review.
Yeah, look.
This is gonna be a, a problem for the CDC, uh, moving forward, that we, the challenge is, uh, with all the projects that we get involved with, uh, that is, that they happen in the middle of the year. And we, we like to see the results of the projects, so we don't want to write a check when we've accepted to participate in a project, assuming they're gonna get the job done and do a good, good job. We want to, uh, be diligent with our spending and, and review the projects that are done there. The projects don't always get done in fiscal year, that we approve the project, so we've approved the funds, but we don't spend them that year. We've got to carry that over into our next year's budget, because that's when the monies are gonna be spent. So, I mean, the budget is, like you said, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, a way to, to, to plan the year, but, I mean, it'd be difficult for us to try to have a zero budget and, and, I mean, there may be, there's some accounting tricks that you can get into to hype seventy thousand, that, that, we feel like this is a-
I guess the statement is, is that deficit's covered because you have cash in the bank, yes?
Uh, uh, I understand you saying that. The, the thirty thousand dollars for the projects, or the seventy thousand dollars that's in the bank, yes, it's sitting in the bank, but it's already allocated for the bills that are gonna be paid, net bills and invoices from this fiscal year that'll come due next fiscal year. So, that money's already allocated and gone, even though it's sitting there, it's gone.
That's correct.
So he started at zero.
And those are not in that project?
Those are not in that project.
So I thought I heard some of that stuff was carried. Those are-
It's not, okay. So I, I got to figure it out. All right. So, you are running at a sixty-four thousand dollar deficit, but for your fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, right? But for eighteen, with variable cash on hand, which is just your reserves that you realize, uh, keep for whatever, contingency and everything. So, the sixty-four thousand, you've done your sales tax revenue based on what was prior, and running it that way, which is, which is rather conservative, because we know sales tax is gonna go up, and that's what you said, right, right? So thanks, we're gonna make some more money on sales tax?
It's anticipated, but we, I mean, they're, they did right. I mean, they, they did the rolling twelve months, so-
That's, that's typically how it's done, I got you.
So we, I mean, we, on average, historically, we've, we've done very well, but we're not, we're not budgeting above and beyond what's anticipated for this, how to fiscal, how to finish this fiscal year.
All right, so sixty-four thousand dollars is maintaining the commitments that y'all have made to the city, the Parks Board, everybody else for the projects that are in progress now.
Did we approve this year? Yes.
They're, they're just gonna be expensed this fiscal year instead of last year. They've already been approved.
Correct.
Appropriated, and everything out of last year's revenue.
Right, and those bills are gonna do-
So the funds are sitting there, waiting for these projects to be completed, we'll spend the funds.
But those are two thousand and seventeen projects.
Yeah, if we're gonna do an actual budget comparison, we're gonna have expenses of last year that will be paid this year.
Correct, that's what's-
Which that's what's causing the sixty-four thousand dollar deficits, because those are two thousand and seventeen expenses being paid in two thousand and eighteen. Now, what you can do is you can pull that out of the two thousand and eighteen budget.
Yeah.
Okay? But when you go back to reconcile, you're gonna have, you know, that's why I was getting back to get a sources basis or a cash flow statement.
But you're not putting like this up on the list. This is supposed to be revenue that comes in this year, expenses that are committed to this year. Not when they actually happen, because that's cash flow. So you just said seventy thousand dollars is sitting in the bank, but it's spoken for. Don't care when it happens, it's spoken for. That's the budget.
Okay.
So we, we're, we're starting at zero.
Okay, but when you look at actual last year, are you gonna sit there and look at a seventy thousand dollar surplus, or are you gonna look at the budget and say, broke even, or we spent the money?
The budget's gonna say, the budget's gonna say you-
The budget's gonna say you spent it.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna tie back to what it actually had.
I take two, Robert, I mean, you can deal with budgets a lot in your business here. Robert is our wise counsel when it comes to budgeting and accounting.
I'm not an expert, she's the-
Well, for our board, I, now, now we know who to call in the future.
Go to zero.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, we're, we're, we felt like, uh-
I mean, if you had to stop business next September twenty eighteen, you can't stop it, you know, minus sixty thousand dollars. And that does mean that you're going back and saying, okay, we're not gonna do the progress.
Okay, would, would it satisfy you if we added a line item at the top and said, items appropriated last year's budget is a carryover, seventy thousand dollars?
Doesn't fit on the budget. Doesn't fit on the budget. That's cash conversation.
We need to delete the, the, uh, last year's expenditures out of this year's budget.
I mean, you're still telling me you expect to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash in the year, you're gonna spend every bit of that, plus some additional sixty five. Is that not what this says?
Yes, but that sixty five is-
But we have the sixty five is sitting there from last year.
That isn't what this says. This says I'm gonna get in a hundred and fifty in revenue.
Yeah, it's because you're starting with a zero, but you actually have seventy there.
Did you have one?
No, that's not on here.
I know that's not what's on here, but that's reality.
And I got that up. But this only says I'm projecting to get a hundred and fifty in. And you told me the seventy was spoken for, so all these new projects are all new. They aren't anything in that seventy.
No, the seventy's in there. Seventy is in there. That's why we're on, that's why we're gonna be over budgeting the expenses. The seventy thousand is in that budget?
The seventy thousand that you're talking about is in tomorrow's budget, correct?
That's why I said it's a statement.
That's allocated for next year. You're not gonna spend, the seventy thousand dollars that you're gonna spend, of, of this hundred and five thousand dollars that you have here for projects, the seventy thousand dollars that gets in your bank, which is part of this one five, is for, is for-
Only, only thirty-five would be incurred in this one.
Would be for, so you only got thirty-five thousand in projects for this year.
That's all that should be on there, because that seventy was budgeted for last year, because it's spent, because it's, you have it earmarked in the seventy in cash, you got it sitting there.
I'm happy, I understand. Do you want to add that, Robert?
No, I'm a lot of fun.
I, I think, I think we're-
I think the exercise is, we just wanna know that you know how to spend your money. That's what the budgeting is about.
Well, the, the arguments are just getting kind of circular. I, I think that, is there a motion to, uh, to accept this budget, to approve this budget?
I like motion.
Are we have a motion to approve this budget? Is there a second? On I, motion fails for lack of a second. Um, is there another motion?
Can we discuss it? We can discuss it, right?
Well, once we have a motion and a second, uh, I mean, we did two firsts, I think it's time. We need to get it on, make a call, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with the budgetary truth. I understand, I would love to see it at zero, I understand that. Robert, if you could, if you wanna do your thing at the top and make it still, you're happy with it, I understand. I, I got, I, I got, it makes sense. Well, it's, it may be-
Make a motion, tell him, yeah.
Try to bring it back to twenty nine, might be up there.
Well, are you gonna require us to do our own balance?
Just table it until we can come back and decide.
We're dealing with too much practice. Let's, let's report it to a, I don't wanna, I don't wanna table a bunch of it, I don't wanna.
Just the motion that was made.
Okay, the motion was to approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna take up a motion again. I, I said that it was a, that failed for lack of a second, but we do have a second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the budget. Um, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the budget. There's one vote, oh.
Yeah, we already, we already threw yours under the bus.
Okay, how can you do one and not the other?
Because we just had the seven hundred there.
All this, all in favor, all of them, they have one vote, two votes, three votes, all in favor of approving the budget. Uh, are you both, are you both abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, then, are we have two extensions, three votes to approve the budget? That's, so, it's approved.
We need to revisit the budget process.
Oh, good. All right. Okay, item number fourteen, consider taking the action necessary regarding refunding the certificate of occupancy permit fee of two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents paid by T.R. Lane Senior for L.A. gun sales. What happened here, I can, this, this, this was put on the agenda by myself, I did it, um, or asked for it. Mr. Lane asked for a C.O., um, and, uh, we did not have a gun shop as one of our definitions for uses. So we had to go through the process, going through the planning and zoning commission and all that. I think the council probably, uh, I'm not sure which meeting, but we're, we're soon to approve or, we're soon to have a vote on whether to adopt, um, a, a, a use that, that will allow a gun shop here in town. So, uh, in the meantime, Mr. T.R. Lane Senior, um, uh, had to give up on us, and he's moved on, he's found another place. I put this on the budget because I just can't see keeping his two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents, um, and he did ask for a refund, so that's, that's why I put it on the budget. Questions, my counsel, yes?
I, I also think he was very disappointed in that we had a gun shop here since nineteen ninety-four, that we were, that was not listed.
All right, and you know, you're, you're right, and I spoke with that gentleman, and he's never had a C.O.
That's right.
He's never had a C.O. This is another, this is another place, but Mr. C.R. Lane wasn't able to get a C.O. because we didn't have the, uh, the use.
But even, he would still be waiting, so I think he's right, and I will make a motion that we do refund the two hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-five cents that he paid for this certificate of occupancy, and we've been done with this. So I will make a motion to approve that.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve this refund. Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yes. I actually want to know, was, was, I mean, why are we refunding this? Not to say that I disagree or don't. Did we fail to, to, to go through this process in a timely manner, is my concern.
That, that is the problem. We didn't go through the process in a timely manner.
Okay, we are admitting fault in this, that we have not gone through this in a very timely manner.
Right, we didn't have, we didn't have a use, a definition for it to use, so we could not-
Well, I knew that, and I, my understanding is that P and Z approved that for twenty-first.
And, and, but the council hasn't yet, it hasn't yet come-
Why is it not to us yet? What, what is going on? I don't, I don't care whether he's gone or not, it should come before us.
It should, it should, and, and it will soon. Um, right now, it's, it's, it's moved at this moment, because this gentleman has already asked for a refund, but we should have the definition, um, in our, in our list of uses, or definitions of uses, and that's gonna happen. It's already been proposed, we already, I, I've seen a draft of, of a, um, an ordinance.
Yeah, but we're, we're looking at two months now, why this hasn't come forward? So, but we fixed our process here, and things are gonna be timely, because we can't keep approving refunds from people.
Okay, we're off the agenda though. No, we can't, but I think in this case, since the gentleman had to move on, since he got nothing for his money, I, I would like to see a refund. We have a motion and a second.
And I think we're setting a bad precedence by doing this. We can't keep doing this. So I wanna hear that we're gonna solve our problems, so that when we do this one time- So I wanna hear that we're gonna solve our problems so that when we do this one time, this is gonna be one time.
That's on another agenda. Right now, we're...
What's on another agenda?
What's on the agenda now is whether we should refund this money or not.
And I'm discussing whether we should refund or not. And what I've asked for is this gonna be a one-time occurrence, or are we gonna keep doing this?
I'm not sure when it's, which agenda it's gonna be on, but it'll probably be on the next regular agenda, this, uh, this, this new ordinance that will allow for sporting goods and recreational goods, and that includes...
Because we've missed this council meeting, so we're talking about the September one. We're gonna discuss this one.
Possibly, and we have no one requesting this pending right now, but we have this gentleman who spent his money and got nothing for it. We have a motion and a second to refund this money. Is there any further discussion?
We can fix the process.
The process, the process will be fixed.
Okay, we won't ever have to discuss refunding something again. Okay, good.
I don't see how we can create that promise because there, there's an infinite number of definitions. We may come up with another business type that we don't have listed, so I can't say that we'll never ever have to offer a refund. But talking about this one that's on the agenda, we have a motion and a second.
Mayor, may I? I think one thing that bothers Suzanne, and it bothers us, is that we do not know... Can you hear me now? I think one thing that really bothers Suzanne, and it bothers the rest of the council, is we should, when that man came in and wanted a certificate of occupancy, if we had told him at the time the business that he was trying to put in was not listed, then none of this would happen. And I think in the future, we are, the city will try to know what can be passed and can't be passed, but under these circumstances, this is really our fault. But I do think that, that that's the problem, and since we are going to have an employee that's in charge of our ordinances, maybe this will not be a weird crime incident.
That's a fair statement. So, can we take a vote? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay, so the gentleman will get his refund. Item number fifteen. Consider and take any action regarding authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with the Van Alstine Independent School District regarding the maximum occupancy of Van Alstine Elementary School Number Two and other matters related there too. Any discussion on the council about this?
I, I'd like to understand why, if, if TEA, to me, is an education group, what that has to do with a building code which is about safety, so why are we, why would we want to do that?
The request from the school district is to have the building have a maximum occupancy of one thousand and fifty-five, which is the most the TEA guidelines that govern them would allow them to have in the square footage that they're building. Under the building codes, the square footage that they're building, say if it weren't a school, if it was for something else, they could have twenty-three hundred people in there. So under the building code, the number of toilets, the plumbing, and things like that required to serve twenty-three hundred is greater than the number required to serve the one thousand and fifty-five. So the school district has asked the city if they could have the standards altered under the building code for just a few of the things so that it matches the ten fifty-five occupancy instead of the twenty-three hundred. So what this agreement does is it allows them to do that, but it does specify that their CO will restrict their building to the one thousand and fifty-five occupants instead of the twenty-three hundred that could have been allowed, and that also any, um, fire marshal documents and requirements would also restrict it to a thousand and fifty-five, and they were willing to have those restrictions in their certificate of occupancy and other fire marshal-related documents. And so, this is an interlocal agreement between the city and the school district. It, it is at their request. The city didn't approach them about this. They, they came to the city.
Will they ever have events or anything that would get them over that number for any reason? I mean, it's frequent that we use school facilities for things. Is it gonna be a shelter? Is it, are they ever gonna have more than a thousand and fifty-five people in it? I guess they'd be limited, that they could never have an event that would push them over that amount.
If their, if their CO and their maximum occupancy for the fire marshal is at a thousand and fifty-five, then, then they're gonna be restricted.
And if I may, Dr. Brown, do you care to speak to this? Do you agree that this is what you want?
Yeah, this is an elementary school. The maximum number we're gonna have in this elementary school at full capacity is up to eight hundred kids. When we get to eight hundred kids, we're building another elementary. The school is not designed with our, with our guidelines from TEA to have over twenty-two kids in classroom. So to get from eight hundred to a thousand and fifty-five would take your kindergarten or your first grader up to having twenty-eight to thirty kids in a classroom, and that's just not feasible. As an elementary school, we are gonna have very few things that ever happen that we don't do at like a grade level at a time. We'll have a first grade PTA, a second grade PTA, things like that. So, you know, if, if we're ever even close to a thousand and fifty-five, the only reason we'll ever even be close to that number is because we're piling people into that gym because we're trying to save their lives from a tornado. And you know what? I'm gonna put a thousand and fifty-five in there and I'm gonna put it as close as I can. And I'm not probably gonna count when we get that many in there. But that would be, the only time we would ever be close to that number is if in our storage shelter there's gonna be tornado rain, that we're piling people in trying to save lives. Other than that, we're never even gonna be close to a thousand and fifty-five. And what happens is, is if we start having to do it for twenty-three hundred for all this other stuff, the cost for, for us to build this school is gonna be, we're, we're gonna be out of budget. I mean, we, we have enough money that we're, we're gonna be able to build a high-quality school, but if we take it from a thousand and fifty-five kids to twenty-five hundred and have to do all that infrastructure for it, it becomes two parts of the school for us to build the school.
So there's no issues from a fire marshal perspective at all about, about any of that? I mean, there would be no events where... That's all I'm thinking. It kinda puts, it puts the building code at odds. The TEA puts themselves at odds with the building code. You're like, okay, what instance would there be that that mattered?
If you put in a two thousand and fifty-five building code, there are odds of reality anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
What is the approximate square foot score?
It'll be about eighty-two thousand five hundred.
There's a blank.
It'll be about eighty-three thousand square feet. I think it's an eighty-two five, eighty-two four.
Well, if we were going to approve this, I wanted to know what was, what was going in this blank. Right here. The third, the third one? So how many square foot?
Eighty-two thousand five hundred.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Is there a motion to, uh...
I'll take a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Van Alstine and the Van Alstine Independent School District.
All right, we have a motion to approve the author, or approve authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with the VA ISB regarding this maximum, maximum occupancy of the second Van Alstine Elementary School. We have a second. Any further discussion from the council? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll come to the groundbreaking on Thursday as well. Thanks, y'all.
All right, so we'll move on to item number sixteen. Consider and take any action necessary regarding a correction to the June thirteenth, twenty-seventeen minutes and possible adoption of the minutes as corrected.
I had that put on there and listened to the document. It was brought to my attention that there was some wording on there that was, if, if you take it out of context, it sounds pretty bad. And I can't find it.
Or is that the one where you take personal responsibility?
Yes, it's the one where I take personal responsibility for all violations. It's like... No, that's not, that's not what it was supposed to say. So that's the discussion of it. Just wanted to remove it. It was out of context.
What you, what you wanted to remove was where it says Mrs. Crow would like to be first real available on any possible open meeting or filing. This was on the way up the, if the correction was made, that correction, it's immediately canceled.
Well, I think we have to, to adopt it.
Yeah, we have to adopt that correction.
I'm ready for a motion to adopt the correction.
All right.
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the correction or adopt the minutes as corrected.
Dr. Lynn says, look.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See no hands? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Give me not personally.
Okay. Now, item number seventeen, departmental reports.
Mayor and council, we're gonna start off with the police chief's report.
Mayor and council, police department had seventy-six hours of training. We had thirty-six incidents, seven hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. Communication had a hundred and fifteen nine-one-one calls. Calls for service was eight hundred and eighty-three. Total train hours was twenty. Phone calls received, two thousand nine hundred and fifty. Record request was eighteen. Courts had closure of two hundred and sixty-nine cases.
Good evening, mayor and council. These statistics are reflected for the month of July. We had just over two thousand people come through our doors in July who checked out two thousand seven hundred and eighty-three items. We continue to issue new, new patron cards at almost double our usual rate, which is seventy for the new patrons in July. July was also our final month for our summer reading program, our final, which ran through the month of June and July. Final statistics for our summer reading program were six hundred and fifty-nine children, three hundred and thirty-four adults. With no way we can pull that off by ourselves, so we also have thirty-five volunteer hours to that supplemented staff time as well. Let's see. Our standard programs in July brought in two hundred and sixty-three children and a hundred and fifty-one adults. Thirty-two young adults attended two programs collectively. Eighteen children at the crisis center benefited from our monthly literacy outreach, and we hosted one adult program with our monthly book club. Fourteen books were added to our children's section, thirty-two to adults, and eleven to young adults.
Good evening, council. Park Forest crews had seven sewer calls, uh, three sewer calls, two were after hours on blocked sewer system. Street department had two work orders on signs, one damaged color, and removal of a tree. Forest crews worked on several major leaks in the irrigation system at Forest Board. We had seventeen meter changeouts, we had six turnoffs and twelve turn-ons, and had nine checked water leaks.
You know, I'd like to say, Steve, I, I got an email, and it was, it was a pat on the back. It was an ad hoc way from a citizen who, who was just, just amazed at the great service that, that you provided in, in, and what was the, I think it was a water leak anyway, but your response really impressed her, and I just want to...
We're trying to do customer service.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. After the call volumes for the month of July, twenty-seventeen, we had a total of eighty-one EMS calls. Of that eighty-one calls, seventy-five of those were emergency medical calls, and that is broke down. Thirty-nine of those calls were Van Alstine. Eight of those calls were out of Gunner, twenty-seven of Powell, and one out of Tombe. And then we had six non-emergency calls. And on the fire side, we had twenty-one calls which involve grass fires, structural fires, and motor vehicle accidents.
City managers.
Mayor and council, go ahead and do the administrative report before I get into city manager report. Administrative Department monthly report, month of July, twenty-seventeen. Department answered twelve hundred and ninety-four calls on the twenty operating days. Received six general inquiries, two of record requests, and two community event submissions via the website. Received sixteen requests for public records, completed nineteen hours of training on permit side commercial, accepted six commercial permit applications for mechanical, electrical, signs, and demolition. Issued six commercial permits, applications for mechanical, electrical, signs, and demolition. Accepted admission, okay, accepted two CO permit applications, force performance and Lux aesthetic medical services LLC. Issued one CO for force performance residential. Accepted eight residential permits for plumbing, re-roofing, foundation repair, fencing, and miscellaneous accessory structures. Issued eight residential permits for plumbing, re-roofing, foundation repair, fencing, and miscellaneous accessory structure. So far in July, we received one commercial permit and seven residential. Utility billing accepted and entered fifteen new utility accounts. Accepted and entered three mailing address changes. Accepted and entered two additional waste can requests. Accepted and entered four utility account transfer. Accepted and entered thirteen utility account disconnections. Accepted and entered six payment extensions. Accepted and entered two leak adjustment requests. Processed ninety-one purchase orders. Issued fifty-four general fund checks, twenty-six water fund checks, one INS check, five insurance trust fund checks, one twenty-eleven B fund check, for a total of eighty-seven checks. Now, on to the city manager report for the month of, month of July. Received thirteen hundred and thirty-nine emails, responded to six hundred and fourteen. Met with staff over budget, met with mayor, members of council, attended EMS billing teleconference, lunch with the CDC president, met with property brokers, attended and presented a council water sewer workshop, met with the CDC director regarding commercial development, met with personnel from the fire department, attended participating agency recognition event, plan of for public safety personnel, attended the meeting last Tuesday that didn't make. Communicated with ANO regarding development along ETJ border, reviewed applications for fire department, met with the residential developers. And that's the city manager report. Thank you.
And I just wanna say, I'm gonna thank all of you department heads, Frank. I wanna thank each and every one of them for the jobs that they do, where they conduct their business. I wanna thank you also for the way that you put that budget together. There are gonna be questions, there's gonna be maybe some adjustments, but you put all the, all the thought that you put into that. Well, of course, we couldn't do without it. We appreciate all your hard work. Frank, thank you and your whole crew.
Thank you. They did a great job, sir.
I, I'd like to thank city staff, and especially Jennifer. I did go back through and look online about the permitting process and the packet. I think it's really nice now. I think it provides a lot of good information, very helpful, and I wanted to tell them I thought it was a great job, and I think it's a, it's a nice section of the online presence.
Thank y'all for doing, putting up with everything, especially as new people, they don't understand everything. So, thank you again for your patience.
Let's see. I would just like to announce there's a chamber breakfast tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, at the Welcome Center, which houses the Chamber, the CDC, and the EDC. So if you wanna come see what's going on in the city, that's from eight to nine o'clock. Thursday, reiterate what Dr. Brown said, there's a groundbreaking for the new elementary Thursday morning, and then next Tuesday, the fifteenth, we have music in the park over at North and Gilley Park, and it's gonna be...
Six-thirty, but it may be that they, North and Gilley Park right now is kind of building it off. They're waiting on steel to come in and finish repairs. We're beginning to decide whether to move to the railcar or, in a looking at rain, um, back over Whistler Stop. So watch the chamber, watch the chamber commerce's Facebook page to know where it's gonna be, what kind of any real time itself right now. So that's for you family's friend.
Did all y'all hear that? Because she didn't have a plan.
I know. And I'm the one that fussed it all night.
Next Tuesday, scheduled to be at Dorothy Fielder Park, if not, it may be at the Railcar Stage, or at Weather, I think it may be at Whistler Stop.
It will be regardless.
It will be, it will happen. Big Al Sanderson, some blues jazz trio, some saxophone drops, and guitar, he's a manager.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Anytime we reappoint or appoint new board members, I always like to take that opportunity just to thank all of our, uh, board volunteers, library volunteers, any volunteers that offer their time up in the city. I know you guys put in a lot of hours, so we just greatly appreciate the work that you guys do.
Well, um.
Wait a minute. One more announcement. Karen, when's the Texas Women's Patriots meeting?
On Monday, uh, August 14.
At Bucks North Park.
Bucks North Park, you can come early and eat. The meeting starts at 7:00, and we're having two World War II veterans come. The one was in Stollikville, three, where the Great Escape took place.
Very interesting. You know, council.
We were about to recess, um, uh, for an executive session. I'm gonna read this in its entirety. Uh, in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, in parentheses, open meetings law. The city council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to applicable laws. Item number 20, all items below for executive session pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code annotated subchapter 551. Council will enter into executive session and discuss the following items. A, section 551 dot 074, in parentheses, personnel matters for annual evaluation of the city And so, time is 10:41 PM, and, uh, Frank, are we gonna use the, uh, microphone or? Which?
Probably better off standing here, but I can check, since it's 11:11, I don't have to go up the guys are up to.
Oh, well, is that? It's late anyway, I don't know if anyone's gonna stick around longer or not. This executive session, this executive session may take a while, um, so, uh, I'm not sure. We may hold it out here. If so, then, then everyone, then we have to leave until we, uh, come back and open, open the meeting again. It may be a couple more hours. Okay, yeah, we're recessing, and the time is, uh, 10:42. We adjourn from, uh, our executive session at 11:44 PM, um, and we are reconvening in the, uh, regular session at, uh, 11:45 PM. Um, no action, uh, was taken during the, uh, executive session, and I don't, I don't believe we have any voting to do now, do we?
Other than to adjourn.
The big one, yeah. All right. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Discussion? It's unanimous.
Thank you.